I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order for September 19th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Rosado.
Here.
Atef.
Stark.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
Brown.
O'Brien.
Here.
Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uer.
Here.
Saron.
Here.
And McFadden.
Okay, we have 11 of the 14 aldermen present. Their second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for August 22nd and 29th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Chanset, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next up on the agenda is items removed, added, or changed. Are there any done tonight? Okay. The next thing on the item is, item number four, is approval of a policy directive on public comments for items that are on the agenda.
That would be me. So, before us is a motion to consider, to adopt a policy regarding timeline limits on public comment on the committee of the whole agenda items. And this is for items that are currently on the agenda, not things that people come in and talk to us, kind of one-offs. These are agenda items. And so, the special counsel that was hired by the city has recommended on the committee of the whole, adapting a policy on time limits for public comment for items on committee agendas. The zoning ordinance already allows the committee of council to adopt time limits for speakers on public hearings, but it does not specifically address general public comment for non-public hearing items. It has been suggested that setting a time limit of three minutes per speaker would be an appropriate time limit for such speakers. While a policy to adopt an overall time limit for all speakers collectively may also be appropriate, we do not recommend adopting such a time limit at this time. So our alternative, alternatives, including no action, could be to approve a motion of adopting a three-minute time limit for speakers wanting to comment on items on a committee of the whole agenda, approve of a motion adopting a different time limit, or do not approve of a motion adopting a time limit. The pros for this, implementing such a policy would allow for speakers to get their points across and allow for multiple speakers on a topic. This would not limit overall public comment and would give adequate time for the committee to consider the agenda item. Cons, adopting a policy could be perceived as limiting public comment, however, the committee has access to commentary made at public hearings and would still allow speakers to raise their points for consideration by the committee. There's no budget impact, there's no staffing impact. And timeline for action, we should adopt or not adopt a policy before considering an agenda item for discussion. And staff is recommending that we have a three-minute time limit. So, discussion on this? Anyone have any comments?
Who do you want to start it off?
Sure. I just have a question. If we don't adopt this, do we have the authority at any specific time to say, "Tonight, because of the numbers, we want to implement a time limit"?
Yeah. And additionally, if we had items on the agenda where time wasn't an issue, you know, there were only two people who want to talk about it, we could lift that completely. It's just so that when we have issues that are hot-topic issues, that it gives more people a chance to talk, and that it limits the number of repetitious comments. And so, I think it's a decent policy to be able to say, "We want to get as many people up in front as possible," and it cuts down on gerrymandering.
But, that's if we approve the policy.
Right.
If we don't approve it...
Well, you could say 30 seconds.
I mean, we can still implement it at any given meeting. I just, and we've done it in the past, I guess I'm asking why...
I think just to codify it.
Just to codify it?
Mm-hmm. Marty?
Yeah, I think we talked about this before when we had the Meisner project, that we were able to, state law allows the limitation for, so that people do have ample opportunity pro and con to speak. I think, based off of the last discussions that we had on that, and the last direction is, the Attorney General has made it clear that you cannot go lower than three minutes. That's the bare minimum that you can do, because anything else would be considered unreasonable, where people couldn't form their thoughts, and they should be allowed to speak. So I, I'm okay with not having an overall always policy, because most time, we don't have people here. So I wouldn't want to limit somebody to five minutes, if five, 10 minutes can clarify it. But in order to preserve the rights of people that are for it and against it, on those situations where we want to make sure that everybody gets the right to be heard, I don't have a problem with, in these limited circumstances, setting a reasonable time limit, which even three minutes for me is kind of pressing it, I would be more comfortable with five.
Elliot?
I'd support it being, you know, at least three. Certainly, five, I think, is fine, given this, you know, particular topic. But I think either way, it's just it has to be consistent for the meeting, for the agenda item.
Yeah, I think three is too short, just having been at the third Plan Commission meeting and seeing when it was three, it was difficult for some people to finish their thought. So three seems short, five seems more reasonable if we're going to do something.
Helen?
I would be in favor of doing five minutes. From what I've seen in all the meetings that I've been to over the last 13, 14 years, is at five minutes, people can usually get everything out they want to get out without repeating anything. I think that that works fine. Sometimes at three minutes, I don't think everything gets out, people feel flustered and don't feel like they get to say what they want to say.
I would agree with that. I think some, I mean, having been at quite a few of the Plan Commission meetings where we have lots of people, and people are very well-intentioned, aren't necessarily the greatest speakers, and have a hard time getting stuff out. And so, I think five minutes is appropriate. Also, knowing that we'll, we have the shot clock on, and we'll be, we'll be keeping track.
My concern is, at five minutes, it's maximum of 12 speakers an hour, if that is, if everybody's waiting in line and ready to go. And so, depending on the number of people who show up to speak on any particular item, the public comments could go on for three hours. You know, it's just that by extending it, by almost doubling the amount of time, you cut in half the number of people who can actually speak. Dan?
I think, in the years I've been on council, and even going back to years when I was covering it as a reporter, I didn't think the city has ever really had a problem, you know, letting people talk. It seems like the mayor has done a really good job of encouraging people, committee chairs have done a really good job of encouraging people to get up and speak. And I can only count on how, maybe a handful of times where a meeting did go a lot later than it maybe should have, and maybe people did do a lot of repetition. I would be in favor of not having any policy at all, but enacting a policy for highly controversial meetings where we have to bring in extra chairs, because typically, these meetings are not attended by anybody, and sometimes not even the press. But when we have 100 people or 150 people here, then it makes sense, just pragmatically, to have a three to five minute limit. Otherwise, you know, God forbid, two people show up in a meeting and like to speak for 10 minutes apiece, I have zero problem with that.
Thanks. Anyone else? Mike?
I'd have to agree with Dan. I, I think, you know, if we can control it on a highly controversial meeting, and we can set a limit on it when we want to, why would we put more laws into the books that have really have no teeth, or we can control without that? So I would just, I'd not support this.
Sounds good. Okay, so would someone like to give direction to staff?
Well, Scott?
Let me, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The law prefers that you establish a policy. If you're going to waive it from time to time, or make adjustments based on particular circumstances, I think you can consider that. But to have no policy is not the preference. You should have some official policy as a starting point, so everyone understands from time to time, meeting to meeting, what your rules are for public comment.
Then why can't we flip it? If the policy is that we have the authority to establish limits if limits are needed, but the default should be that there aren't limits, is that still a policy?
I think I would agree with council.
I guess so. Policy is no policy.
Laura?
I think as a point of clarification, what you are codifying is your right to establish limits.
Right.
You know, it's not that you are setting a limit for all future meetings, you're just codifying the fact that you have the right to set a limit. Am I right in that, Mark?
It sounds like that's the preference of the commission, or the council.
It sounds like...
I think that would be, it would be your policy then. You may set specific limits from time to time. I don't prefer that, but I guess if that's the, if that's the center of the council, it certainly, it's in your minutes, it's your policy, and everyone will know of it.
Marty?
Yeah, I was just thinking back to the last time that this was the exact same issue. And the advice from the city attorney at that time was that, so long as you, it could be reasonably anticipated that there was great interest in a certain topic, and that numerous people wanted to speak, to make sure that you maximize the ability to have as many people speak as possible, that you quantify a certain time limit so that those people, so that more people can actually speak. Because without a time limit, one or two people could go through for an hour or two hours, and kind of, to your point, the opposite could ring true, where you could have somebody speaking for an hour, thereby limiting maybe only two, three people that could speak in a night. And you're trying to prevent that while making sure that you know there are situations where you're just trying to set the expectations, where we want people to speak, and we want as many people to speak as possible, with a time limit that is able to form their thoughts and opinions.
And the final point is...
Would be for about the five minutes.
Okay, there we go. It's just...
What I, no, what I had said before, was the five minutes is...
Can I make a motion to, to direct staff to have a five-minute limit on, for this policy, for people to speak? Feel like working? Thank you.
Motion by Salvati, second by Meitzler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Two opposed.
Anybody to? O'Brien and...
O'Brien and Chanset.
Thank you.
Now that we're done with that, move on to matters from the public that are not on the agenda. Anybody wish to address us on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on then to item number six, ordinance 17-60, surplus property of the police department. Alvin Callahan?
This is a request for consideration for declaring four vehicles surplus. They are police vehicles, each with over, at a minimum, 110,000 miles. There, two of them are six years old, one is 12 years old, and one is since 1999, and has already been a recycled vehicle from before. All four of these have over 1,000 miles, or 100, I'm sorry, 1,000 hours of engine idle time. And these vehicles meet at least three of the established criteria for the fleet replacement. The age exceeds four years, or 10 years if it's an administrative fleet service. The mileage is in excess of 100,000 miles. The life cycle maintenance exceeds 50% of the purchased price, which on each of these it does. It's 75 to, on a couple of these. And the engine idle time is in excess of 1,000 hours. Again, so that's all of them. They did throw out a request to all the city departments to see if anybody wanted to recycle these vehicles again, and there was no need at this time. So at this point, I don't think I see the deputy chief here.
Oh, there you are. Did you have anything else?
Without any questions.
Just curious if ESDA was included in that, because I believe that ESDA picked up a vehicle a few years back.
Yeah, it goes out to all...
And nobody?
Yeah, all city personnel. Any response from anybody?
I think almost all of ESDA's vehicles are even beyond 10 years to begin with. So with that in mind, I will recommend approval to City Council, ordinance 17-60, declaring the aforementioned four vehicles as surplus.
Second?
Wait. I have a comment, not to pick nits here, but number three, that's not exceeding 50% of the vehicle purchase price, the maintenance? My math?
But it still meets...
I'm sorry, number two.
It meets three of the criteria, which apart from the one about the 50%, that would be four, three are four out of the four, one is three out of the four.
It just says in here that it does. So, we don't have the purchase price on the Tahoe. It just, it's incorrectly stated in item two, that the costs are 50%, or greater than 50% when they're not. It's really, really close, but it's not. And I don't know if we have to make that adjustment or not, I'm just... It's really, it's 49.6%, but it doesn't exceed 50. So, I don't know how. Can you go drive around for a little bit longer?
But the, the fact remains, for the request for these vehicles to be declared surplus, it still meets three of the criteria. So maybe by City Council, if you could get that changed on item number two. Thank you.
I second your motion, or I don't know if it was.
Yeah. We have a motion by Callahan, second by Saron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, they can go on, consent. Okay, then moving on to number seven, which is ordinance 17-59, amendment to the zoning map for plan development overlay.
That would be me. Yes. So, this is the ordinance that probably most people are here to hear our reactions to tonight. This came in front of City Council as an initial land use proposal review back in May, and the minutes from that meeting are on the city website. The applicant provided an overview of the proposed building and site changes, talked about what type of housing it would be. People spoke at that meeting, we asked for additional information, and, and then moved it to historic preservation and plan commission review. HPC review took place on August 14th, 28th, and 11th. The Plan Commission held public hearings, and met on August 2nd, 16th, and 30th. And they, both bodies deliberated. It came out of historic preservation with a vote of four to one approval on the certificate of appropriateness. It came out of Plan Commission with a positive recommendation with conditions. And so, it comes before us tonight to get more information and to also discuss the proposal with input from staff. This is our first time as the City Council is in a cow meeting to have a full discussion. And so, part of this meeting will be our internal discussion, to be able to get more information, to ask questions of the developer where we have questions. And so, public comment won't take place until after we've had our discussions. So, we'll be happy to take input after we've had some discussions and asked some questions. I have some comments that I need some clarification from. The mayor has brought up and sent to us, and he'd like some clarification. We have a statement to read from Historic Preservation Partners, and so, but as soon as we get through that part, then we'll be happy to take comments from the audience. So, opening this up, Joel, do you want to come up and talk a little bit about it? And, and for the record, most of the people here have, at the City Council level, have either attended in-person meetings, or watched livestreamed on BATV, or archived BATV reviews. So we've seen the meetings from Plan Commission, and we've read the minutes from Historic Preservation. So we're all up to speed so far on the people who've come in and spoken to the other various bodies about their opinions for or against when it comes to the companion project. So, Joel?
Yes, thank you very much. You had mentioned the Plan Commission public hearings. There was about nine hours of public hearing that the Plan Commission held, during which they took testimony from the applicant and from additional general public speakers. The speakers, the general public speakers regarding the proposal, they pretty much echoed many of the opinions that were heard here by you at the initial land use proposal review. Many of the speakers against the proposal acknowledged a need for lower-cost housing, but believed that the proposed location is not appropriate to provide that housing due to potential negative effects to the neighborhood, and the school district, and negative effects to property values. They also noted that it was adjacent to a busy intersection that has needed improvements for quite a long time. Some objectors noted that many of the proposed units would not provide acceptable views to the outside, and the glass blocks would make it costly to cool the units. And some speakers pointed out the potential environmental health issues related to having residences in proximity to the cellphone equipment, which is currently on the building. The applicant Evergreen Real Estate Group testified that, in their experience managing similar types of housing developments, the proposed 80 units would generate approximately 26 grade school, or school students. They, they stated they would provide transportation for the students from the site to and from the elementary school. The Geneva School District has submitted a letter to the mayor, generally stating that they are accepting of this proposal, and they will serve all students that come into the district. There, regarding the cellphone antennas on the building, Evergreen noted that keeping them on the building is needed to finance the project and for ongoing operations of the site. Relocating the antennas to the tower's roof behind a proposed fiberglass shield is actually preferred by the State Historic Preservation Office to having the antennas where they are now on the tower's walls. Evergreen's traffic and parking consultant testified that the volume of traffic that would result from the displacement of non-residential tenants by the, by the proposed residences would be negligible compared to the existing traffic on Batavia Avenue and Fabian Parkway. This consultant also testified that no changes to the site accesses are being sought, and the existing accesses can accommodate the proposed change in the building use. Neither KDOT nor IDOT is mandating any road or access improvements, but right-of-way would be dedicated to KDOT by Evergreen. Evergreen will install a signalized pedestrian crossing through Fabian Parkway on the west side of the intersection. And also regarding parking, Evergreen's consultant testified that the proposed 206 parking spaces will adequately serve the site. Evergreen's consulting civil engineer testified that stormwater management codes can be accommodated. The Plan Commission, after the hearing closed, the Plan Commission deliberated for approximately four hours. The Commission acknowledged that the existing traffic issues, or they acknowledged the existing traffic issues in the area, but felt the proposed mixed-use redevelopment would not greatly affect area traffic or functioning of the intersection. The Commission expressed little concern with the requested modifications to the zoning code. Those are listed in your draft ordinance. The Commission determined that adding sidewalks in the area of the east parking lot, often referred to as the racetrack, and also having a drop-off area near the front or east side of the building would benefit residents and visitors. The Commission was concerned with the appearance of the building's west wing and the visibility to the site from residential properties to the west. The Commission requested the west wing's walls be painted, and felt that the west and north walls should have the same character of foundation landscaping as proposed along the west wing's south wall. The Commission stated that landscaping should be added where the adjacent property to the west that separates this subject property from the residential properties. It does not, there are areas where it does not have dense landscaping, and the Commission wanted landscaping added to fill those gaps. The Commission made positive findings of fact, and, they made positive findings of fact, and the stated review of conditions for zoning map amendment for the plan development overlay. Those are outlined in ordinance, draft ordinance 17-59. Also want to note that earlier today, staff distributed a revised version of draft ordinance 17-59. I gave a copy for each one of you this evening. The main differences are, a number of the whereas statements have been modified to strengthen the code, or to strengthen the ordinance, and the benefits, or the goals that would be met for the comprehensive plan are also enumerated in that draft ordinance. By a vote of six to one, the Commission recommended the City Council approve the plan development overlay, including the modifications to the zoning code and conditions of approval as they are outlined in the, in the draft ordinance. Also, they, they recommended action on a preliminary and final plan of subdivision that is reflected in the resolution that accompanies this ordinance that was also distributed earlier. The Commission also approved design review for this project. It was subject to several conditions that are related to council approval of the plan development and subdivision, plus additional conditions related to site design, operation, and aesthetics. Staff is supportive of this proposal, as it meets several goals of the comprehensive plan, as noted in the revised ordinance that was distributed earlier today. The proposed project would add multifamily residential units, including affordable and accessible units, that are noted as being needed in both the city's comprehensive plan and the Homes for a Changing Region publication. Evergreen would repair and restore a valued, significant historic resource. The building has long been underutilized, and it would be revitalized with this project. Evergreen is effectively balancing the desires and requirements of several reviewing and approving historic preservation authorities, including the City of Batavia Historic Preservation Commission. The project is consistent with the property's underlying mixed-use zoning designation. Multiple-family residences are a permitted use in this district. Many of the requested modifications to the zoning code that are part of the plan development overlay would accommodate requirements of other jurisdictions, principally the State Historic Preservation Office and KDOT. Much of the vision glass and entry requirements of the mixed-use district were designed to provide inviting commercial storefronts close to the sidewalk, rather than residential access points. The parking modification includes the safety valve of having landbank parking built if parking supply becomes a problem. Evergreen has demonstrated how the project would be financially feasible, largely by bringing a significant amount of tax dollars already sourced and to be sourced from areas outside of the tri-cities and state of Illinois, and they would bring them home to Batavia. The City Council has alternatives with the ordinance in front of you, as they do with all ordinances. The council can approve or deny each ordinance as presented, or the revised ordinance as it was given to you this evening, or propose changes to the ordinance, or remand one or both ordinances back to the, or remand the ordinance back to the Commission for further review. Among the pros of having this development approved, or the ordinance approved, it will allow for a well-capitalized new owner of this building to restore and adaptively reuse the Campana Building, bringing needed residence types to the community. Among the cons with this, of not adopting the ordinance, if the ordinance is not adopted, it will not allow the property to be redeveloped as proposed. Staff notes, this is the only official redevelopment application the city has received for the property in several decades, and having another proposal to consider in the near future is unlikely. Without a new owner and an approved redevelopment proposal, the building will likely to continue to deteriorate, deteriorate, and may reach a condition where restoration is much more expensive. Among the budget impacts, being redeveloped and restored, the building will realize an increase in assessed value, resulting in increased real estate tax revenue to the city. The city will realize building permit revenues as part The city will realize building permit revenues as part of the construction project. The city will also realize additional state per capita taxes once the city's population increase is determined by a decennial or special census. The city will incur the usual expenses of serving residents as opposed to the cost of serving non-residential occupants for the areas of the building that are going to change to residential. Additional residents living there would also hopefully shop in Batavia's retail establishments, which would result in an increase in sales tax. There would be a staff impact like any development. Staff time will be used to review plans and inspect construction. Typically, residential use generates more service calls, but the expected increase can be accommodated with the existing resources. Staff time will also be necessary for the, to apply the rental dwelling licensing and crime-free housing annual programs. There is a timeline for action with the Cow recommendation of both the ordinance and the resolution that would approve the subdivision. These items, both the ordinance and the resolution, would be placed on the city council agenda for final action on October 2nd, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 17-54 as it was revised earlier today and distributed.
Anyone have any questions of Joel? Helen?
You mentioned in your talk, one of the things I've got in my notes here is on the stormwater, that I haven't really heard a definitive answer yet on that. They say they will meet the codes. I have yet to see the plans that show how they meet that. Where does the stormwater go? How does it get to the river? How does it get to the stormwater drains? Haven't seen any of that yet, so that's one of the big questions that I have.
Well, there, I know Evergreen has representatives here this evening that may be able to address that, but for approval of the zoning entitlements, we don't require final engineering.
Okay.
And final engineering would be part of the building permit review process, and they will need to demonstrate compliance with the stormwater management code before the permit is issued.
Anyone else have questions of Joel?
Joel, just, just a quick question. You have listed here, you know, the pros and the cons, and the pro is if we pass the ordinance, you listed the good things of the passage of it, and the con is if we don't approve the ordinance, what's not going to happen. So are you indirectly saying that there are no negatives to this project?
Well, the negatives that came, that we heard from the general public that came out of the hearing, the plan commission was not convinced that the, that the issues regarding effects to the surrounding area would be to the level where this should not be approved. Will there be a change in traffic? Yes, there would be a change in traffic from what there is today. That's largely because the building is, I believe, about 60% unoccupied. If residents, if residential units were not going in the building, and the building became 100% occupied by non-resident, by, with non-residential uses, we heard testimony from Evergreen's engineer that the traffic would likely be greater than it would be with the residential units in there. So there, there may be effects. Would they be negative or positive? They, they would be both. I believe that there might be some activity that one who lives near the property would view taking place on the property that they don't see today. If a resident does not want to see additional activity on parts of the property, then that might be perceived as a negative.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I do have one thing. I want to go back to the stormwater, because I know that's, I know it's not necessarily required until we get to permitting stage, but the fact is that there's a significant amount of surface area that needs to be accounted for, and I really would like to know what the plan is. Doesn't have to be final, but we've, we've heard from adjoining neighbors about issues with water, and that is something that I would like to hear more on, how that meets city and county, and how that is affected by the landbank as well.
Okay. Well, as I mentioned, Evergreen is here this evening. You can pose that question.
I have a question, Joel. When it comes to Route 31, obviously, is a state highway, and Fabian Parkway is a Kane County road, is that correct?
Yes.
And with this proposed development, they would not require any additional curb cuts or any additional access or egress points?
Correct.
If this was redeveloped?
Correct.
So they're the ones who own those roads? They're the ones who make those determinations?
Correct.
Okay.
They, they have not stated that there needs to be any change to the access points with this application. KDOT has noted that at some point in the future, they may want to make some changes to the access points, which could result in right-in, right-out only, but that would take place at a later time. They are not requesting that this applicant make any changes with this, with this proposal.
And that's all outside of the city's purview?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm going to just hop on with Scott here and say, you know, historically in the city of Batavia, we have, every time it rains, we have flooding issues. I mean, stormwater issues are a main concern for all of us here. And to just say, well, we'll wait till a little later, you know, I guess I'm uncomfortable with that. Maybe Evergreen can address it because it's a major issue. It's a, it's a quality of life issue for residents, for the surrounding area, and it's something I think we, as a council, are now getting more supportive behind to address it more forcefully. And so I'd like to hear what's thought about anyway, and if nothing's been done, maybe they should start thinking of doing something about that.
Elliot, you had a question?
Just a clarification, where you said typically residential use generates more service calls. Are we talking about like building inspection, fire inspection, city electrical?
Principally, public safety, police and fire. Both departments have informed us that they, they feel that they can handle the expected increase.
Marty, you had a question?
Yeah, the, to kind of still piggyback on all of the stormwater, the not having a plan for the stormwater, in my mind, is a negative because it lines up with all the things that have to go before that. If we grant the landbanking, then you lose the tot lot and the soccer field, so now you've lost amenities, and other things then start dominoing after that. And it could, from what we were told at the, the plan commission meetings, it might trigger then the stormwater, the Kane County stormwater ordinance, which then, now we're planning a few years later on for something that we should be planning for now with the eventuality that not, we shouldn't be planning the if they need to use the landbanking, but when they need to use the landbanking, then what? Where's the, where do the amenities go? Not specifically even saying tot lot or soccer field. That is a condition of residential, multi-family residential. They have to have places to go. If you remove that, then what? Then where does the stormwater go? Where does the underground detention go? Where do's the, where do the ponds go? When those things aren't known, I don't know how we can adequately do our job and think about the future, what it could be. That's what we should be looking for, the eventualities of needing that landbanking.
Well, I think that since three people have brought it up, and Joel has mentioned several times that the developer is here, why don't we ask the developer?
Okay. Wait, hold on a second. Joel, before you-
Just going back to KDOT, IDOT. So they didn't specifically have any issues with the project as it's presented, and I do note that they have raised issues before that have killed projects before. Was there any, any thought regarding future for the bridge? A lot of residents that got in touch with me had long-term questions about would the cities, Batavia, Geneva, the state and the county ever cooperate on, on some realignment or something with the bridge? Did we go far enough in the future in terms of traffic to determine if there's major improvements that still need to be made here?
Well, I think KDOT recognizes that there are improvements that need to be made, but does this one project rise to the level of being responsible for that and based upon KDOT not making any requirements of this? No, but that doesn't mean that they won't be addressing it as they have said. They will be addressing it at some point in the future.
Because we know that 20, 30, 40 years from now, that traffic is just going to continue to increase. Another thing that residents had brought up, if we didn't do residential and we changed this to a commercial, what if this were Starbucks? What if this were a place that sold cigarettes or a place where you would take your dry cleaning? That would increase traffic. How can we adequately quantify with mixed use if this was completely rented out, what the true impact would be? Because there are so many different uses of commercial in a project like this, that it's really hard to say what the traffic impact would be. This could be a nightmare corner if this was completely rented out for commercial use if we choose to do nothing tonight.
It could.
But it could also be a huge data center with no cars.
Well, the, our, Evergreen has not requested or any changes. They feel that they can adequately serve the property with the existing access points. KDOT has not refuted that. There is language in the ordinance where we do have, staff does have the opportunity to require or to do a parking audit at any given time, particularly when there's a change in non-residential use. For example, if there's an existing retailer that occupies much of the south end of the building, if that were to leave and were to be filled with another use that's permitted, we can do a parking audit to see if the number of spaces provided would work.
Thanks, Joel.
So just another question.
Sure, Mike.
Dan brings up a very good point, and I'm having trouble trying to understand it, but I think what I've been told, maybe I didn't hear it correctly, but is that there is no significant impact if, if we have residences in this building to a troubled traffic corner? Is that what I heard?
Close, but what, what Evergreen's traffic consultant testified is when you take away the potential or you take away the existing non-residential uses and you put residential uses in its place, there would not be a significant change to the volume of traffic that would be generated by the site.
We're not, we're not taking away any non-residential uses.
No, Mike, but if the building were full, if the building were full of businesses right now, that it would be about even.
All right, well, that's great, but the building has never been full of businesses, and so I can't, I can't see that logic, and I guess maybe I'm dense, but I just don't see that what we have there at that corner right now, the, 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 the traffic that we have at that corner, and we're going to fill it up with however many residential units, that there's not going to be an impact on, 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 on the traffic there. And to Dan's point, I mean, now we have a mattress and whatever else is there, if we get, I mean, doesn't mean there'll be some mattresses there forever. Five years from now, eight years from now, a Starbucks moves in, a cigarette store moves in, and now you got the daily traffic that they weren't planning upon, now we have even a bigger potential problem. I mean-
So by limiting the commercial and putting an emphasis on the resident, that would be less traffic, but we would have to be sure that we were limiting the commercial uses there.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we, we know it's going to be residential. We know it's already commercial right, right now, if, if this is all approved, right? It's a mixed-use development. And so we know the amount of commercial we have, they're not adding to that, it's just going residential. So we do have, I think, of, an understanding of what we have, and so we're not adding more residential after this, I don't believe. Maybe I'm wrong, but I just, I just don't see that it's all well and good.
Joel, I have a-
Somebody help me see it.
A question to that is, if this were to pass, wouldn't some of the current business owners no longer be there? Wouldn't some of, that would go, some of that would go away?
Yes.
And so it's not like there's, there's going to be who's there now plus?
Right, but when they go away, I mean, I think Evergreen is kind of want to fill those spots again, and so it's not like they're going to be empty. The commercial will be empty forever. I think they're going to look to fill it.
Some of those spaces will be residential units-
Right.
-that are now commercial space.
Right, yeah.
So that's the difference.
Yeah.
For me, it's no big difference.
And maybe a mattress store is no longer the highest and best use-
Right.
-for that other spot in front.
Okay, so back to the stormwater, so we can get that one done. If the representative of the developer would like to come up and talk about the stormwater plan, that would be terrific. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm David Block from Evergreen Real Estate. Good evening, members of the committee, members of the city council. Let me get Joel off the hot seat for a minute here. So yes, we're happy to address the stormwater issue. I wanted to invite Mike Renner from Erickson Engineering Associates, who's our civil engineer, up to speak to this a little bit. I'm going to plug in the screen here, so just bear with me for a minute. So I understand your question is with regards to stormwater, and if I understand it correctly, what the question is, is how have we addressed stormwater with the plan that is, that shows the banked parking, and then further, what do we plan to do once the banked parking has been implemented in the plan or it's been built? Right now, the plan that you have in front of you shows, it fully, well, what it shows is that there's approximately 23,347 square feet of impervious area. That's what it creates. Your ordinance, City of Batavia, which has adopted, the county's ordinance says, anytime that you exceed 25,000 square feet of net new impervious area, then stormwater detention is triggered. In our plan, we don't trigger that, at least in the interim plan or the plan where we have banked parking. That's why when we presented it to the plan commission, it was a plan that does not provide stormwater detention because it's not required by your ordinance. Once it is exceeded, then all of the areas on the site, whether it be that which is tributary to Route 31, or tributary to the north, or for that matter, tributary to the south to Fabian Parkway, all of those drainage areas would need to be reviewed and approved by the agencies with respect to stormwater detention. Keep in mind that Kane County, City of Batavia, they have one ordinance requirement for stormwater. IDOT has a separate requirement for stormwater. So depending on which tributary area we're talking about would depend on which one we need to meet or satisfy. In some cases, it's the most restrictive, but just bear in mind, we're dealing with multiple agencies, so we have to address their requirements. That's the general explanation of stormwater. I know you probably have more questions.
Okay, question, Mike?
Just a comment, close call.
Yes, this, now, this 23,347, that number has gone up throughout the, the meetings with the plan commission because that number was a lot lower prior to adding all the sidewalks in around the, the racetrack, as they call it. So that number has gone up since the, the plan's initial inception, but either way, it still does not exceed the 25,000.
Are those sidewalks around the racetrack included on this?
Yeah, they're included in the 23,347.
Anyone else have questions? Oh, Dan, sorry.
Not just a close call, that's like less than the square footage of some people's houses. You're with like 93%. That's not by design? That's super close. Would it be in, would it be in good faith to possibly abide by the ordinance anyways just because you're that close?
It, it's your ordinance.
Okay.
Mike, you had a comment?
My comment before was about the parking.
Okay.
Is this plan, though, inclusive of, I thought I read sidewalk along Fabian? It does not include the sidewalk along Fabian because I don't think that's part of the plan. plan.
It was a condition.
Includes the new sidewalk along Fabian within our property.
I think, are you referring to the sidewalk that goes to the west?
West.
Correct. Okay.
That is not included in this.
Does this, does that number include the land bank parking?
It does not.
No.
What's the plan when you get to the point where land bank parking has to be done? Then what happens?
Right, once you exceed the 23,347, or in other words, once you build the land banked parking, then, as I mentioned, you would have to meet the stormwater requirements of Batavia, Kane County, Illinois Department of Transportation, and so on. Then you would provide stormwater detention for those areas.
How would you do that?
Sorry?
How would you do that?
Through various methods, whether it's above-ground storage in a open detention basin, underground stormwater detention, which could be a tank, pipes, oversized pipes. It could also be in swales or in what they call best management practices, which are more innovative stormwater detention methods.
And that would be sufficient for whatever demand, stormwater demand that would be placed upon that space?
Correct, because what would happen is we would have to meet the requirements for 100-year storm event, which seems to happen about once every five years.
Every year.
I think that goes to what I was asking, is we only have 1,600 feet and change to play with without even getting into needing more parking. And the minute that we go into more parking, we'll be coming back at a later date to address it when this is the time to address it, for me, because I want to know, because that's what we're supposed to be doing, is planning for the future, not today and how close it is today. If anything, we should be having more due diligence since we're so close that we start adding a few more things here and there. Now it's over automatically without even, and then that knocks this out of the way, that knocks that out of the way, and it just causes future problems that I would like to avoid.
Go ahead.
You had mentioned that the, this plan accounts for the sidewalk along 31, correct? But it does not account for a sidewalk along Fabian?
It does not account for the sidewalk that people have been talking about that goes west of the property that is part of this project. It does include a new sidewalk proposed along the Fabian Parkway. It's actually what we would be donating to Kane County along this portion of the property. That is included in those calculations.
But, but there is not, it is not included just west of...
That's correct.
Up to where township begins?
That's not our property, that's right. And if I may, Mr. Callahan, to answer your question, our intention through the design phase of this project is to fully design both the base case, which is the 206 parking spaces, and the full land banked parking. So there will be a fully worked-out stormwater design for both of those, and we will present that to the City of Batavia Building Department for review of that information. So that, the detailed design that goes into those stormwater calculations will happen at the design phase, and those can be, you know, available on record. So it's not like we'll have to come back to you or we'll have to go back to the Building Department. Those plans will be available. So it's, we are planning to fully work through the design requirements of the full buildout of the stormwater.
Right. And I do understand that, but I think it's the, having the knowledge of that and then the amenities that are currently there that are also required under the ordinance. If those go away, then it's kind of you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, you're getting it addressed later, but now, now we've waived the amenities that are there because we don't know where those are going to be, if at all.
Well, again, the Plan Commission has requested that if we do the full land bank buildout, that we identify a new location on the site for the soccer field and the tot lot. So we would need to do that as part of our full design. The challenge that we have there is more on the historic preservation side. You know, the historic preservation, particularly at the federal level, state and federal level, is concerned about putting things in the front of the property. So it makes it, it makes it a little challenging to address that. But we will continue to work with the State Historic Preservation Office and the National Park Service to arrive at something that they can live with as well.
Mark?
I guess, I think that's the point that Alderman Callahan is trying to make here, is let's just assume the parking is going to be built. What is this going to look like? That's what we're up here to make a decision about, is what this is going to look like for the residents. Because if you're there and then, oh, we need parking because we said you need parking, and then every historical district says, well, you can't put anything on the lawn, now we have 80 units that don't have amenities. Because now you've got nowhere to put it, because you just filled up your entire west side of the property, and you're already being told you can't change the front of the look, the lawn and everything. So I want to see what it's going to look like in the future, considering the fact that we all believe that we will need a parking.
I think the two primary amenities that we're talking about are a soccer field and a tot lot. Dimensionally, the tot lot would still be able to fit into the back corner of the property back here, even if we had to do the full buildout parking scheme. The soccer field is literally just a, we're not going to have goalposts, we'll use movable goals. So you're literally just finding whatever the dimensions are that we're using, and there is adequate space both on this corner of the site and here. This is the more desirable place for it if you have to put in, and you basically just paint that on the grass. So you're not adding new structures to the front. I'm not, I'm not that concerned about getting the Park Service to approve that as a soccer amenity in the front. And then the tot lot, there is space at the back corner of the property if necessary.
Dan?
The spirit of the historic preservation is to preserve that vista.
Absolutely.
Where preventing you from sticking a golden arches up in the front, that would be an obvious case where you're wrecking that vista. But to move a soccer field, are they really going to have a problem with that?
I don't think so.
So when you go to do parking, just five years from now, whatever it is, will you be coming?
Mike, use the mic, please.
Sorry, will you be coming with variances?
No, I think the idea is that this is kind of an integral, integrated plan that says, okay, this is the condition today for the traffic and parking needs that we've identified today. The city and the staff have proposed a mechanism whereby if there is a clearly identified need for additional parking on the site, that either we build it or there is a mechanism for this sort of special service area to charge us to build that thing. And so I think the idea is that the city is covered either way if there is additional need for that, for that additional parking. So, you know, obviously, our preference is to build it ourself, but we understand that the city is looking to a mechanism to put that in place to make sure it happens.
Marty?
With these, with these issues that we were discussing, I think it's not just only our triggering of it. What is the plan if the 20% that is market rate feels they don't have enough parking? We might say there might be enough parking, but if you can't rent out the 20% that are market rate, that they don't have certain amenities, they don't have enough parking, what is the plan for being able to fill those at that point if the market rate then becomes something different?
I think it's unlikely that the market rate units would be something different, and I find it highly unlikely that parking would be the issue that would make the difference between a tenant wanting to lease a unit or not. As I've said in multiple meetings here, these units are not for everybody. So there is a subset of the population that's just not going to want to live here, and that's okay. We have identified in our market analysis a broad enough cross-section of the broader community, not just Batavia, but really the entire Fox River Valley, that would potentially be interested in living here. And so if necessary, if people are saying, you know, I'd love to live here, but the rent's too high, like any landlord, we make a rent concession. And that's the way that we typically fill up a unit.
Anyone else on the council have any questions?
I have a question for you about the elevator system in the building. Is the current equipment going to be utilized or is a newer system going to be installed? And is the current design of the incumbent elevator in place able to meet updated city codes?
So I will take a crack at this, and then I might ask my architect to come up and fill in the blanks here, but there are actually two elevators in the building now. There is an old freight elevator that's original to the 1937 construction of the building. That elevator is being removed. And then there is a newish elevator that's been there for about 25 years. That elevator is up to code. It meets current standards. We'll be reviewing its current equipment and if it needs equipment updating and things like that, but the fundamental mechanics of it are solid. One of the things about this building is that the majority of the units are on the first floor. And even units on the second floor, there just aren't that many of them. There's a very few, small number of units that are on the third floor. So we are very comfortable that, given the way this building lays out, that the one elevator that is existing now on the east side of the building is more than adequate to serve the tenants that we propose here.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about the elevators? And is anyone here tonight, Laura, from the fire department? I don't see the chief.
No.
Okay. There were some questions about fire safety in the building as proposed. We talked about stormwater. We talked about vehicle entrances. Yeah, I'm going over the mayor's notes to make sure that I don't miss anything that the mayor had to say.
Alderman Stark?
Yes.
If I could, prior to it coming to Plan Commission, there is an internal design review meeting with various members of staff and the fire chief and/or the fire marshal are there to sit with the developer to review the plans, and they did not note any issues that they had with those plans.
Great, thank you. Dan?
This would be an interesting one for your architect. I had a lot of residents ask me, and this is a philosophy issue, if you're going to be giving tax dollars as an incentive for someone to move here by using housing credits, but you move them into a building where it may cost them a lot, a lot of money to heat or cool their unit, does that seem like good planning? Do you have any idea what it would cost to make this building be truly energy efficient so we're not throwing good money at bad money? I'm having a real problem understanding energy efficiency in a building like this.
Well, and again, I'll take a crack at it, and I may ask Dennis to come up and assist here. But, you know, the energy code is different in a new construction building versus a rehab building. Okay, so there is a presumption in the International Building Code, the energy component of the International Building Code, which Illinois follows, and I believe Batavia follows that as well, that in a rehabbed building, particularly in a rehabbed historic building, that it is not going to be as energy efficient as new construction. That's just a fact. It's an old building. We're keeping big parts of the old building. We've heard repeated testimony that, yeah, the glass block is not as efficient as new double-glazed or triple-glazed argon windows. I can't represent otherwise. So there'll be energy leakage across the glass block window. The challenge here is finding the most efficient heating and cooling systems to maintain comfort in those units without, as you mentioned, creating a huge burden on the tenants for having to pay their utility costs. And the tenants here will pay their utility costs. That is part of our basic management philosophy, is making sure that tenants have sufficient credit in order to be able to get utilities in their own name. That's an important part of our approach to property management.
It's not, it's not just credit, it's resources.
It's resources, but one of the things about doing an affordable housing project is that essentially the rent is set based on area median incomes. That's the HUD policy, that's the Treasury policy for the housing credits. And then there is what's called a utility allowance that is deducted from that rent. So in other words, the rent that is calculated to be affordable for a person at a given income level is reduced by an amount that is equivalent to the expected utility cost of that unit. So the reduction for the cost of those utilities is already baked into the rent structure of an affordable housing development like this one. So combining that with putting in the most energy-efficient heating and cooling systems we can in this building, we believe is a reasonable approach to what is going to be, no doubt, less efficient than a brand-new building.
But you don't necessarily have an incentive to do it, or do you?
I'm not sure I understand.
Do you have an incentive to put energy efficient in there if there's going to be a calculation that increases the subsidy?
Well, we have a requirement with our IDA credits. We commit to the Illinois Housing Development Authority that we will achieve a certain level of energy efficiency. And so that is basically part of our regulatory requirement, is to make sure that the building, as modeled by our engineering team, meets those basic energy standards. So it's, you know, we have engineers who are looking at these issues and modeling the heat flows across these surfaces. We know what the, we know what the R-value of a glass block is, and we're using that to build these models.
We've ultimately been to translate that into a dollar amount. The reason I ask is if one of these units rents for $1,500 and you're going to tell me my February gas bill is going to be, you know, $600, I'm not going to be moving in.
It's not going to be $600. I mean, the utility allowances are on the order of $75 to $125 a month. And, yeah, there may be months, in the coldest month of the year, that number may be higher, but averaged over the course of the entire year, that is fairly reflecting. And this is not, you know, this is not our study. This is a study that actually HUD does on a regional basis for utility costs in the Chicago metro area. We have to identify the systems that we're using, and we choose the utility allowance based on the heating and cooling system going into the building. So, you know, there is, there is a fairly established process in the world of building affordable housing that accounts for the energy costs as a cost burden to the tenants and nets that out of the rent that would otherwise be charged.
Do you, do you, this might be out of place right now at this juncture, but it just begs, my question just came to me. Do you guys safety net the residents to some degree concerning heating? And the point being that, you know, people have challenges, financial challenges, that's why they're going to subsidize housing.
Right.
Okay? And so with those challenges, whatever happens, car breaks down, kid needs braces, you know, they got hit with another obstacle. We see it all the time on difficult winters that people start heating their houses with gas stoves and fires develop, you know, and people are killed and maimed. I mean, your other residents would be at risk. I guess my question is if someone's having difficulty to meet that obligation, do you have safety nets to help them along?
So one of the things that we are doing here is we do not provide social services to all of the residents of this building, because for the most part, the residents are working people and they don't necessarily need those services or ask for those services. But we are planning to work with AIID based here and to, specifically to help those residents with whatever the variety of challenges they have, whether it's help accessing employment opportunities, or help filling out a tax form, or potentially, if they get into trouble, helping them, for example, set up a payment plan with the utility companies.
Applying for LIHEAP?
Yeah.
Was that?
Or applying for LIHEAP?
LIHEAP, yeah. So we're not in the, in the business of punitively evicting good tenants. And so, you know, if we have, if we have a tenant who's otherwise abiding by the rules in our development, but they run into some financial difficulties, we have a strong incentive as a landlord to make sure that they're able to work with the utility company to resolve that issue. And so we're constantly in communication with our tenants on those issues.
Marty?
Yeah, I think the points that Dan and Mike are bringing up are what resonate with me in this, that I don't question whether or not residential goes in there. That's an allowable use. We're not making that determination. But we're making the determination about, is it livable? And can residential go in there? We know we allow it, but if we make too many concessions, then maybe it might not, might not be allowable. Now, I understand the point that you're saying, it might not be for everyone, but this is not a 100%. the point that you're saying, it might not be for everyone. But this is not a 100% market-rate project where people then get to choose. It's kind of a little bit incumbent upon us to speak for those residents who, by their very nature, they might not have the opportunity to say no to this. And if we don't allow them the amenities that they should be afforded that anybody else at every other equal-like place in town would receive, they can't just automatically say, "It's not for me, and I'm not going to take it," because that might bump them to the bottom of the list. And they, they might then have to sacrifice their comfort or this or that. And this is kind of our, I agree that if it can be housing, it should be housing. But that's the whole point. It needs to be livable.
I guess I'm not, I'm not quite sure how to respond to that. Nobody will force anyone to live in this building. And we'll have an established waiting list process. As we've discussed, we will be working through an intergovernmental agreement with the Aurora Housing Authority to help provide some subsidy to some portion of these units, 25 out of the 80 units there. So those folks will end up paying 30% of their income, whatever that is. So, you know, that's what that percentage is, 30, 35% of the building, something like that. So those folks who are very low on the income spectrum will get a strong assistance in order to live in this building. But even then, the Aurora Housing Authority has agreed to allow us to establish what's called a site-based waiting list. So, nobody from Aurora is going to be, you know, said, "Hey, you know, there's an opportunity up in Batavia, take it or leave it." That's not the way this works. This is going to have to be people who come to this building, who visit the units and say, "That's really cool. I've got a 16 and 1/2 foot ceiling, I've got a loft-style bedroom, I've got a kitchen that opens out onto this big living room, and I've got this big, beautiful site here that is looking out onto the Fox River. I want to live there. Tell me how I can live there." And so that is, that is, again, the population that we're looking to serve in this building.
And to be clear, I don't think you're saying you're trying to force people to live there.
Right.
But the flip side of that is, what if you have someone who feels they can't say no to it because of their situation? And it, some of these variances speak to livable conditions that would be allowed or would be required in every other multifamily development that we have in town. I just want to make sure that, all things being equal, anybody that's living there is afforded the same opportunities as they would the next development down the road.
I think, I think I understand. I guess the distinction that I would make is that this building, this historic building that we are trying to save is unlike any other building, not just in Batavia, but really anywhere in metropolitan Chicago. And so there is, again, a subset of people who are sufficiently interested in, in living in a building like this and being part of that, that they are willing to say, "Okay, I, I can see that the windows are lower and that there's a big wall of glass block. I like that," instead of saying, "You know, I want to make sure that whatever, you know, other apartment complex is there, I have exactly that same thing." I think that's the distinction, but maybe I'm not being clear, so.
Mike?
Someone said to me, and it was just brought up here, Aurora was mentioned. And I have no issues with people from Aurora, but I would hope to think that if this were to come to fruition, that people in Batavia and people in Geneva who are needing of assistance would get the nod and not people from Aurora.
Well, again, that's our intention. And because that this will have a site-based waiting list, we are going to market this property. We have a document that's called an affirmative fair housing marketing plan. And we will market this property first in Batavia and then in Geneva-St. Charles, sort of in the tri-cities area. And we fully expect that we will be able to fill up the building and keep it leased just by marketing to Batavia and to the immediate surrounding communities. We do not anticipate that we're going to need to expand our marketing effort to go beyond the tri-city area, because we think there's sufficient need here in these communities for the kind of housing that we're offering.
Mark?
I want to go back to the, the heating and cooling. You were saying that though, like $75 to $100 a month is the, is the estimate or whatever. Is that like preset, and then when three months goes by and you realize it's $200 a month, does it change, or is it set at the beginning?
It changes every year based on HUD review of the, sort of the regional economy and based on the specific type of heating and cooling system that we're using in this building. So it's based on a regional review of utility costs. And so if we have a gas-fired system, as the cost of gas goes up, those utility allowances go up as well.
Okay. So, so going back to it, if I crack all the windows open in my house and I turn on my high-efficiency furnace, it's not going to keep up. And I think that's the challenge here, is that you're going to get so much energy loss that I don't think your credits are going to balance it out. And I also don't think that if you look at your 20%, people come in, "Hey, this is really cool." Well, it's really cool until it's really expensive to live here. I paid my $1,600, $1,500 a month for this apartment, and now I'm spending $300 a month in total utilities. And that's, then that's the issue you're going to run into. Now you've got a bunch to turn there. What happens when you can't keep those 20% occupied? Is that, is that part of your profit, is expecting that, hey, I'm going to have 20% of these are going to be market-rate apartments? And if you don't, if you can't keep those filled because word gets out that it's really expensive to live there, now what?
Well, again, it's, it's part of our program. And so our program has, you know, profitability assumptions in it. But like any landlord, if it is apparent that we're not hitting the targets we want to hit in terms of keeping units leased, we will offer concessions. And so, you know, we will keep these, we will keep these, these units leased. You know, that's, that's our business.
At a loss?
Potentially.
At a loss. You'll lose money.
If we need to.
Why?
Because the cost of a vacant unit in terms of the overall community is, is pretty significant. And we are being monitored not just by our public agencies, but by our private investors. And our private investors anticipate a certain level of occupancy. And so basically, our private investors are going to look at this and say, "Okay, you committed to us that you maintain this building at, you know, 93% occupancy. And if we're not hitting those targets, the investors have a problem with us, and that creates a huge difficulty for our business." So, yes, we will, our, our business interest is aligned with our investors in that we have made certain covenants to them, and we need to keep the units occupied at a certain level.
So how long do you keep the properties?
Mike, please don't interrupt. Please let me call on you. There's other people waiting. Elliot.
So, so maybe to make sure that, that these are in fact, you know, serving the needs of, of the people that would be coming to this property, is it possible to get just a breakout? I'm assuming you've run your own numbers internally. I'm not asking for that, but perhaps percentage-wise, you know, how much would a person in some low-income bracket, percentage-wise, be putting towards utilities? Because I think that's, that's what we're hearing up here, is, you know, the general concern is, that's great that they're getting a credit to be able to live in a community, but if the utilities are going to price them out because it's eating such a substantial portion of their income that is limited, this might not be something feasible for that bracketed income level.
I think, Dennis, you have a, you have a second? I'd like to ask my architect to address the heating and cooling system, because right now we are looking at heat pumps as the primary heating and cooling system, which is, which is just about the most efficient heating and cooling system you can use in a multifamily property. So maybe Dennis can shed a little more light on your question?
My name is Dennis Langley. I'm the architect for the project. I think basically what I want to do is describe what we intend to do to improve the efficiency of the building. So sometimes loss are developed, you know, and everybody likes the brick, so nothing happens to the brick, and you have a look. It's not our intention to do that with this building at all. Every surface other than the glass block and some of the historic walls, which have the tile, will be insulated, highly insulated up to an R19. So what that does is it prevents the heat loss, holds down the heat gain, and also increases the comfort for the tenants inside in that they're not sitting or living next to a cold wall. And we're also improving the roof surfaces of all the building, which is quite a bit of roof, up to an R49. The, the windows that we're adding on a lot of the spaces are high-performance windows. They're thermal insulated glass. Again, they're not inexpensive windows. They're high-performance energy windows. We have a mandate by our lender to have a highly efficient building. So every opportunity we have, we improve the efficiency. All the lighting will be LED lighting, which holds down the cost as well. As far as gas and the misuse of gas, it's an all-electric building. We'll have electric stoves. We won't have gas appliances in the units. So the heat pump system is called a water-sourced heat pump. So in fact, both the landlord and the tenants pay for the heating and cooling because the central system produces chilled water, heated water, that's delivered to each unit in each, each apartment. And that heat pump in that apartment takes that energied water and converts it into more energy. So, on the electrical side, so the electricity that the tenant pays for takes the already-conditioned water that the landlord's provided and takes the heating and cooling out of that. So it's sort of a shared cost. And in fact, the owner can boost the amount of energy that he sends to the units if he needs to, to make sure that the energy efficiency is, or the affordability is kept within the units.
Mike, did you have a question?
Yes. How long do you intend to keep the building if you're losing money?
Again, we're not anticipating losing money on this building. We have a covenant with IDA and with our investors to hold this building for a minimum of 15 years. And there is what's called an extended use agreement, which requires a period of affordability for 30 years. And so we would hold this building for a minimum of 15 years. And, you know, the, the systems are designed to make sure that the improvements we're making to the building last through that 15-year period, with the understanding that 15 years from now, we might have to put a new roof on it and do some, some basic things. But we also have fairly significant capital reserves to pay for ongoing capital replacement as necessary. If heat pumps break down, we replace them. If the elevated equipment needs either maintenance or replacement, we have reserves set up for that. So these projects, affordable housing projects, are designed in a very conservative way. Any investor in these, and our, these are institutional investors, see these as very safe, conservative investments, because that's how they are designed.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions about heat, stormwater? Any other questions that we've covered, what the mayor wanted us to cover, except for fire code, which will be addressed, as Laura said, through other meetings? A question that has come up regularly on social media is, why spend so much money on this building to convert it into 80 units for mixed income versus why not fewer units, high-end units? Why, why is this a better project for that development?
Well, again, as I, as I mentioned to you, and it was back in May, so I don't expect you all to remember it, but the fundamental premise that, that I brought up at that time, and I did repeat this argument to the plan commission, is that there's a reason that this building has been underutilized for so many years, that the market by itself cannot provide sufficient return on investment for any investor, whatever their program, whether it's high-end residential, high-end office space, medical office space, restaurant, what have you. The return on investment in what is required to bring this building fully back to life, to address all of these buildings, you know, we are anticipating more than $20 million in total capital requirements for this building. An investor would only make, I think I estimated, about a 3% internal rate of return and about a 5.5% cash-on-cash return. No, no real estate investor will make an investment on those terms today. And so the need for the low-income housing tax credit, which is an alternative mechanism for funding this thing, and essentially uses federal tax policy in order to bring in dollars to this, in combination with the federal historic tax credit and some other resources like the Illinois Affordable Housing Tax Credit, that is the alternate source of investment. And those investors are not chasing the same type of returns as standard institutional equity in a project. And so that, to me, is the fundamental reason why this approach is the best chance that this project has in order to bring this building back.
Thank you. Dan?
Given the fact that you do have to rely on public funding or tax credits and whatnot, there is a nagging question that has been on social media. I just wanted to know if you would have had an opportunity to address it. There were some questions regarding the integrity of the applications. Did you hear any of those arguments, or did you hear any of those criticisms?
I heard a lot of those criticisms. And again, I, we stand by the integrity of our application. We stand by the integrity of our firm and our reputation. I applaud the diligence of the, particularly of the opponents of this project, who have used the Freedom of Information Act to great effect to look at every page of our application. And, yeah, some folks found a few mistakes. We're not perfect. We never admitted that we were perfect. But we do not believe in any sense that those represent misrepresentations or fraudulent approaches or anything like that. What they are is the result of coordinating a professional team that I just noted on the Aurora-St. Charles project, and this project is, is more complex than that, involved 89 different individuals, 89 different professionals in the public and private sectors coming together to redevelop a complex project, using financing mechanisms and regulatory mechanisms at the local, county, state, and federal levels, and in the private sector. So, yeah, there's a lot of complexity in this. And if we missed some things, or we made some mistakes in our application, we are more than willing to look at those and correct them. But we absolutely reject the characterization that those represent some kind of misrepresentation about the project.
Thank you for addressing that.
Thank you. So, anyone else in the council have any comments, questions, anything you want to bring up? Mark?
I know there was all kinds of talk about asbestos removal, and I know it's happened, except for the windows, which it can't happen. But the report did also mention the caulking has asbestos in it. And my research shows that, that caulking, when it deteriorates, can become friable. Are you guys doing anything about replacing the caulking?
We're remediating all the caulking. We're-
So all the caulking is being replaced?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Thanks, Marty.
There was, when you were talking about the return on investment, a big part of this was the to save the building. And I believe it was brought up during the public hearings about additional funds and grants that are out there that the current owner or anyone could apply for, to apply them to that building. Do you know if anyone has done that? Because one of the conditions in here is that how long the building's been vacant, but hasn't been vacant. It's got 60% occupancy, which is pretty good in, for a building that is deteriorating, that has issues. Do you know who, if anyone, followed up with applying for those grants? Could you apply for those?
I think, if I remember the question correctly, that maybe the question that you're talking about was a little bit of a misunderstanding of how the federal historic tax credit program works. I think we indicated that we would be getting something on the order of about $3.5 to $4 million in equity from the sale or syndication of federal low-income housing tax credits. And so I believe the question was, well, how come the current owners can't do that? Or how come the, you know, a group of residents can't get together and apply for those credits and, and make it happen? The way any federal tax credit, any federal real estate tax credit works is you need something called tax basis in order to generate that credit. So that means you need to spend money on the property. And the federal historic tax credit is a 20% credit against federal income tax. So that means for every dollar that you spend on the project, you only get 20 cents worth of credit. And so that means in order to generate the $3.5 to $4 million in historic tax credits that were, historic tax credit equity that we're getting, we have to spend $20 million. And so, again, the challenge is, I'm not sure that the current- And so, again, the challenge is, I'm not sure that the current owners can support a $20 million investment in this building in order to do that. I applaud Frank and his partners for what they're doing. I think they've been a good steward of this building. It's an awfully challenging building to maintain for the 10 years that they've had.
Thank you for clarifying that point.
Anyone else have any comments, commentary, anything they want to add? Okay. Well, before I turn it over to public comment, I have a couple of things. First of all, thank you to everyone who's written, called, commented on Facebook. I call it 11:30 at night. I take, I take great offense to the comments that anyone on the city council or anyone in the city of Batavia is having their pockets lined by the developer. That is way uncalled for and absolutely ridiculous. This is not Springfield. So when it comes to projects like this, we have to look at facts. And so when we get emails and there are references to what people say, those people, when people spend a lot of time talking about crime, Section 8 housing, things that are not, things that are in our purview, it really becomes very repetitive. And we, as a city council, have a direct charge. So when people say we're not listening to the residents, we do listen to the residents and the people who elected us. Oh, and those are the other thinly veiled threats. We won't get reelected. And I don't think any one of us here ever takes it into consideration when we make a vote. So we make a vote based on the facts we have, the information we have, and the laws that we have to make decisions based upon. So I just wanted to get that all out there because I've been simmering over this through all of the plan commission meetings. And as I sat and watched all of those hours, and it's my time too, as well as every document that comes across my desk, as well as my full-time job, we do this because we have a real vested interest in our communities, both Geneva and Batavia and all the surrounding communities. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand that we do listen. And we listen, though, to both sides. And the people who are against projects tend to shout the loudest. And so while there are people here tonight that are really against this project, there are a lot of people who are equally for this project. So I just want to make sure that we get that out there. So that said, the first thing I'm going to do is read the letter that we received from Preservation Partners, and we have a copy to be entered into the record. So this comes from Elizabeth Sevanda, the executive director of Preservation Partners. And she says, "The city of Batavia faces unique challenges with the Campania property. The Campania building is a white elephant. It is also an iconic landmark, a beacon on the Illinois prairie, which is deeply appreciated by many in our region and far beyond. The challenge facing us today is approving an appropriate use for the building that will allow its owners to fully utilize the site and will accomplish a comprehensive restoration of a beloved landmark, preserving its integrity for decades to come. Our brief history, staff of PPV-FV, has monitored development proposals for over two decades. These three stand out. Build dryer clinic in front to the north with strip of retail on bottom floor of Campania and townhouses to the rear. Move the entire structure forward on the property to allow large townhouse development to the rear, the west side. Rent out a large portion of the building to a Chicago charter school. None of these proposals advanced to the review stage by city staff and officials. Most important, none of these proposals would have restored the building repairing its unique features such as glassbook windows, ceramic tile, and concrete infrastructure. We currently have in front of us a project that will accomplish the goals we have outlined, a proposal that has met the rigorous approval of the State Historic Preservation Agency and the National Park Service qualifying it for federal historic tax credits. Preservation Partners strongly supports proposed use of the site for mixed-income housing. However, our focus tonight is the future of the building itself. We are well aware that you appreciate the profound significance of the structure since Batavia designated it a local landmark. We simply want to add our voices to the chorus of supporters who view Evergreen proposal as a remarkable opportunity. We implore you to take advantage of it. On behalf of the entire Board of Preservation Partners, Elizabeth Sevanda, Executive Director, Adam Gibbons, President." So that's in the record. And then we can open it up to public comment. And if you'd like to come up, please state your name for the record. If you have spoken at a public hearing, we'll probably recognize you. And, but again, please state your name for the record. And if you feel that, you know, what you have to say has already been stated before, you can just comment that you agree with the person who spoke before you or three before you. Scott will be timing it. I can see his timer from here. He'll give you a hi sign when you have a minute left to speak. So.
I have the list.
And, oh, and Alan has the list? Sorry. I didn't realize we had one.
Up first is Guy Prisco. Is he here?
Maybe read off the first few.
Yeah, I'll read off the first few. First is, up is Guy Prisco. Second is Josh Bailey-Green. And number three is Scott Sutterland.
Good evening and thank you. I'm here to present the city council with the first of a series of petitions from the Homestead residents. This morning, we embarked on a information and discussions on the Homestead property. There's been a lot of, on the Campana property, there's been a lot of discussion. Many people have watched the proceedings on television at the Homestead, and several of us have followed the proceedings here. I want to read the preamble to the petition and then read you some of the supporting information. The undersigned residents of the Homestead Covenant Retirement Community petition the city of Batavia, Mayor and Alderman, to reject the proposed Evergreen Campana development as being unsuitable for basic human living needs and therefore detrimental to the orderly development of the local area to the long-term viability of the Homestead retirement community. Please see the attached memo. And I'd like to read this. This may be, may take five minutes. The memo states, "This is to the Mayor and Alderman from the residents of the retirement community." It says, "Regarding reasons, the Homestead community has petitioned Batavia City Council to reject the proposed Evergreen Campana development. The residents of the Homestead community listed on our petition, after reviewing online documents, attending information meetings at the Homestead, and conversing with members who have attended the city public hearings, are totally dismayed that the proposed project has advanced this far in the review process. The residential apartments, apartments proposed for the Campana project constitute substandard living conditions that result in unstable occupancies. Public records show that such instability very often results in criminal activities that can affect an entire neighborhood for a very long time. And there are very many examples of this up and down a valley. This is a primary concern for the residents of the Homestead and for the Homestead's current and future economic and occupancy viability and property value. It is our strong consensus that the actual layout of the apartments constitutes substandard living accommodations that are unfit for human habitation. One, all one- and two-bedroom apartments have interior bedrooms with no windows to the exterior. The lofts, which are the second bedroom in two-bedroom units, are located over the main bedroom and, again, have no windows. And they have ceiling, the lofts, at least from the drawings that we were able to see, it looks like they have exposed concrete for ceilings. And if you've seen the building, the exposed concrete's pretty rough. The ceiling height under the loft space is 7'9", and the ceiling space in the loft is 7'11". And that's without any kind of suspended ceiling or anything. And if you suspend the ceiling to make it a reasonable living environment, then you're going to have to at least increase, or you deduct at least three to five inches for exposed ceiling. The underseal windows on the first, windows on the first floor, east apartments and second floor, south apartments, do not meet any acceptable standard for window placement in habitable spaces. These windows are placed so low as to pose a danger to small, curious children falling out and aggressive small animals entering in."
One minute.
The top of the underseal window frames in the first floor, east apartments, and in second floor, south apartments, is 3'10", from the floor, from the floor. Whereas the site height for an average adult is at least 48 inches from the floor, meaning that the sightline of a person sitting at a dining table would be approximately two inches above the top of the window frame. And there was an attached sketch. The third floor, south apartments have no windows and depend on operable skylights for some natural light and ventilation. No windows. What happens in the wintertime? And for that matter, I guess maybe you could find someone in the population nearby that would be willing to live in a windowless apartment.
I'm sorry, sir. You're down to seven seconds.
Well, can I go on? I got, this is important.
I'm sorry. You can't.
Are we limiting? I thought we weren't limiting.
No, we are limiting to five minutes.
Can I come back and read the rest of it?
Let the gentleman finish. And then from here on in, everyone keep it under five minutes? He was, I don't know.
These are very serious matters we're talking about.
Sir, it's a serious matter, but we need to keep it at five minutes. We went through a whole process to limit it at five minutes. We have to honor that. And I appreciate, we appreciate everyone. We want to give everyone the opportunity to come up.
If you have a copy, that's turned into the alert. We contributed all of us.
I do have a copy for all of you, but, you know, it's real important that everybody hears this.
Of course.
And it's, and this is from a community, a significant part of this community, of Batavia. These people need to be heard. And this is not, these are not just my words. This is a consensus-type document. So I'd appreciate it if I could just finish it. "Third-floor, south apartments have no windows and depend on operable skylights for some natural light and ventilation. A one-bedroom loft apartment..."
Sir, sir, I'm going to need to cut you. We did, we did agree upon the five minutes, and I appreciate it. And I know who you represent, and we really appreciate it.
Can I come back after the others are done?
After everyone's done? Absolutely.
Okay, I'll do that.
Up second is Josh Bailey-Green.
I'm Josh Bailey-Green. I'm a resident of Batavia, and I'm a pastor at Batavia United Methodist Church, whose conference is a member of the Fox River Valley Initiative. And you guys have heard from us over the hours and hours of, of public hearing. The Fox River Valley Initiative represents 35,000 residents in the Fox Valley that strongly support initiatives to increase much-needed housing, affordable housing in this region. On May 2nd of this year, Evergreen Development presented their proposal to this committee, to the committee of the whole. And over these past 140 days, the city has received written and verbal inputs through the plan commission process and the historic preservation process. By following these processes, both of these efforts have resulted in a recommendation to the full city council to proceed with this proposal. And during that process, the developer has worked with city staff to respond to questions, concerns, and where possible, to make the adjustments to the plan that would satisfy. This includes their expressed intention to donate the needed amount of land for the future potential improvements to the intersection right there on Fabian, saving taxpayer money and eliminating the potential red tape if the proper entities were to pursue eminent domain. In other words, for those who are interested in the most expedient path toward improving a very dangerous intersection, and I am one of those people, I have a four-year-old son, and I drive through that intersection frequently, it seems like clearing the path for this project is the, is the most expedient way to help that process along. In addition to the Fox River Valley Initiative, the city has seen support from service agencies like AID and the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry. You've also seen support from the League of Women Voters, Fox Valley Preservation Partners, and numerous churches in the tri-cities, as well as individuals who need this type of housing. There's no question from either side of this issue that affordable housing is much needed in this area that's been conceded over and over again. And so this proposal for the redevelopment of the Campana property is the best hope for preserving this vital cultural landmark while bringing much-needed affordable housing to the Fox River Valley. We of the Fox River Valley Initiative, again, representing 35,000 people in this area, urge a yes vote on this proposal, proposal, because it's just such an opportunity that we don't want to pass up. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Alan, next.
The next one up is Scott Sutterland. And then Emily Erickson and Matt Baldwin.
Scott Sutterland, 2200 Campbell Road in Geneva. Thank you for your opportunity to speak tonight. Good evening, everyone. We've been in Geneva for, like, over 20 years. We love it here, and there are many reasons for that. But sticking the residents of Batavia and Geneva with an 80-unit low-income housing is not only unfair to taxpayers, but would be a disaster for a community in many ways. We've even talked about some of that already. But it's not really the job of the government in general to provide food and housing for people on a regular basis. There's really no money for that. You know, the state of Illinois is bankrupt, basically. There are over $100 billion in debt. Everyone should know that. But our federal government is $20 trillion in debt. Are we going to expect the federal government to take out another loan and pay interest on that loan? To build something that people should really be providing for themselves? If you, if there's a need for housing, you go out and work for it. And should we stick our children with this kind of debt, that we're paying interest on this debt? That's what we're talking about here. Should we always press button number one for the government to solve our problems for us? It's not sustainable. It's really best that individual responsibility remain with the individual, not with another party. Chronic pampering with freebies, subsidized rent, and even paying the entire rent does not teach people how to be responsible in the real world. Because in the real world, rents are much higher. In the real world, people have to get up in the morning to go to work. When we're sending money, check in the mail for them, and a free place to live, where's the incentive for them to change their lives around? We really have to think about, this is really a core thought here, an issue. It's never talked about. Yes, it's feel-good to build housing for people, and it's feel-good to do that, but, you know, in the real world, it really doesn't work. Everyone has a choice in life to be responsible or not, work hard or not, save their money or not, get married or not, have children or not. But subsidizing foolish private lifestyle choices is not only unfair to taxpayers, but it rarely helps those people who feel they need help. You cannot help people permanently by doing for them what they could and should be doing for themselves. I've also heard that this, the reason why this is being pushed here is for reasons of diversity, social engineering. Well, unreported, but the fact is, people have been selling their houses at huge losses and moving away from diversity for decades. I've done the same myself in Chicago. In fact, I go by what people do rather than what they say, because there's a lot of hypocrites. We don't need diversity just for the sake of diversity. For anyone who feels they have no problem with this project, honestly, I would like you to get in your cars, please, and drive to any, any complex that has 50 units or more of low-income housing, and honestly ask yourself, would you, and you, would you like to have your family living right next door to that? Okay?
One minute.
You have to do that. I'm sorry?
One minute.
Thank you. It wouldn't be interesting for me, or my family, or their security, in my opinion. I understand the developers want to make some money. I understand that. We have to make a living. But homeowners need to keep their family and property values secure. There are many houses in the immediate area of Campana that would, that would be very devastating for the property values. I sold real estate a couple times, part-time, in Chicago. I've seen the changing areas. I've seen six, seven for-sale signs in every... I've seen six, seven-for-sale signs in every, every block.
Ten seconds.
You're losing property value with that. But, but, you know, homeowners, homeowners should not be burdened with the government that is part of the problem.
That's time, sir.
Encouraging people to be more responsible is better. Thank you.
Next.
Okay, next is Emily Erickson, and then Matt Baldwin after that.
Hello, I'm Emily Erickson, 1851 Allen Drive. Okay, so I'm going to talk about code modifications and, basically, to what end and extent. So Section 1.102 in Chapter 1 of your zoning code states, "The broad purpose of zoning code is to implement the comprehensive plan to promote and protect public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of the residents of the City of Batavia." It then goes on to list general intentions of the code, like letter B, "to ensure consistency and conformity among the comprehensive plan, zoning districts, and zoning actions." I personally am very concerned over the amount of variances that Evergreen is requesting, and if approved, what precedent might be set for future developers and businesses within Batavia. It's clear that three of the ten modifications Evergreen is requesting are in direct correlation to funding and their ability to finance the project. For instance, the wireless communication antennas. It's in Batavia City Code that cellphone antennas should not be allowed, are not allowed, on residential buildings. Why is Evergreen asking to make this exception? Because without the revenue from the antennas, the investors would not see this project as financially attractive. The next modification requested is the decrease in the number of parking spaces from three-hundred to one, three-hundred-and-one to two-oh-six. Why doesn't Evergreen just put in the number of parking spaces required, since that's your code and they have the space for it? Well, to meet the three-hundred-and-one spaces, they have to rely on the land bake parking and back, and as Mr. Block has noted several times, that lot construction may trigger the need for costly stormwater management, so again, making this process, project less financially worthwhile. Another modification requested for financial reasons is the decrease in the twenty-five percent required first-floor space in the existing building adjacent to the street for retail, entertainment, and eating and drinking. I think you're already dealing with this at the One Washington Place, as they're asking to replace the first four retail with more residential units in attempts to offset some of the higher-than-expected costs. Other modifications have to do with the historic nature of the building. Evergreen is forced to meet the state and the local historic preservation standards, or they will lose their historic tax credits. We have been told by Mr. Block several times that without these tax credits, the project will not move forward. If financial hardship is grounds to get relief from Batavia zoning code, then how will this new standard be applied? Who will get to qualify for this exception? Business owners? Future developers? Homeowners? Where and how do you draw the line? If these exceptions are approved, the precedent will be set for any future developer, business owner, or even a homeowner, to ask for relief from Batavia zoning codes so that they may also financially afford whatever project they are seeking to do. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Matt Baldwin, and then Joe Kiefer after that.
Good evening. My name is Matt Baldwin. I live at 2013 Allen Drive, immediately adjacent to the project. Thank you for the five minutes tonight. I prepared my statement so I could stay within the anticipated three minutes, so I'll read through this. And I'm, I sent a letter out to all the aldermen, so thank you for everyone that read that and considered. I really appreciate that. As I note in there, I'm a civil engineer by trade, so I think I bring a unique perspective to this project, especially when it comes to reviews. So during the public process, I voiced several concerns regarding the project, including drainage and detention, site engineering and parking, access limitations, and proposed roadway safety improvements. For example, adding turn lanes into the site, moving the entrances, et cetera, to make the site itself and remediate some of the existing challenges as we move forward with this project. So my main concerns and reasons I think this project has been so divisive in a lot of ways is because it seems as though, up to this point, the city is establishing several new precedents, approved a long list of variances at the plan commission level, and making several concessions in the current plan, especially when it comes to the historical preservation. I detailed some of those in the letter that I sent. My request to the city has been to develop a comprehensive design for the site that addresses the existing issues, access, safety, et cetera, and marries them with the proposed plan, which includes parking lot expansion, the connector road, drainage design, but I don't quite see that in the current plan yet. Looking at the plans, I still think they're unfinished. I'm hopeful that the council will not entertain a vote to approve the site plan and project without understanding the implications or feedback from the other major stakeholders. Some of them were mentioned tonight. We talked about KDOT, IDOT, the county stormwater. So to me, there seems there are several important design considerations that are still up in the air. I'll give a couple of quick examples, just so I'm not speaking in obscurity. So the plat which is being considered for approval tonight does not include the full fifty feet of right-of-way along Fabian requested by KDOT in their letter dated 7/26, which they stated is needed for future widening. That's because of the homestead on the south side, they stated that all the widening's going to happen to the north of the roadway, so that's why they need so much room. However, sorry, the resolution seems to be worded as though KDOT has reviewed and approved the right-of-way. There's a note on there that says that they, this was based on the request from KDOT and is dated 7/25, which is the day before their comments came out. So just to follow up and understand that better, I contacted KDOT yesterday, and they have not seen or approved this plat. So to me, they requested fifty feet, we're giving them fifteen feet, which then bumps out to fifty feet as part of this plan. I think it makes sense to get their formal comments before the council signs off on that, or at least clarifies why it goes from fifteen feet to fifty feet when they requested fifty, the entire length of the property. Also, I mean, something that I've continually heard repeated, IDOT comments have not been received or included in the project. I've talked to their permit guy for, for Kane County multiple times, and they still haven't submitted any formal comments regarding this project. And they're going to submit comments related to the access, the stormwater, if there's drainage coming out onto their roadway. So I don't know how it's possible to say that they haven't asked for any improvements mandated as part of this project if they haven't submitted any formal comments yet. As part of the KDOT comment letter I referred to, I was just going back into that letter as I was sitting in the audience, and comment number eight stated that, "In addition, per KDOT permit manual, the installation of a left and right turn deceleration lanes are generally required for access to a county freeway." It was also made in combination with the potential for a right-in, right-out.
One minute.
I interpret, okay, thank you. I interpreted that they were asking for either a right-in, right-out or deceleration lanes. You'd see dedicated right-turn lanes or left-turn lanes into a site for safety to avoid rear-end accidents. I think that's important as part of this, this project. We've talked about the accidents through here. Why not make it safer? There's already some existing problems. I drive down Fabian all the time. You feel cars bearing down on you all the time. And then also, in terms of the conversation on detention, I've heard the comment that it's net new impervious area, but that's not how the ordinance is stated. It's stated twenty-five thousand square feet of redevelopment triggers the need for detention. Redevelopment isn't net new impervious area. Those are two different things. We met with the Kane County Stormwater Group, and they noted to us that you don't get--
Ten seconds.
Thanks. You don't get credit for the aggregate parking lot, which those calculations, the twenty-three thousand, is getting credit for the aggregate parking lot. So from the people who do this all the time and enforce these policies are stating that it's currently be applied incorrectly. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Joe Kiefer, and then Rob Burns.
Good evening. Joe Kiefer, 1740 Feser Run Place, Geneva. I want to start off by addressing what Mr. Block just said about my questions on August 16th. He said he's not more than willing to take a look and address those issues with the application, so I look forward to that report, the next city council meeting. Thank you very much. I take that as a good first step forward to being a good neighbor, so I look forward to that. Somebody brought up an issue about maybe putting the cart before the horse, and I feel like we're doing that a little bit right now, also in regards to the environmental assessment that I raised. HUD has not had a chance to review this, and the reason for that is because Kane County has not finished their environmental assessment. That was supposed to be done in June. If that was complete, which it actually was, and then based on the public commentary, they wiped the slate clean and started over, and they have not completed that yet. But had there been no public comment, what would have happened in the beginning of June is Kane County would have sent their request for release of funds along with their environmental assessment to HUD, and then HUD would have reviewed the project. So what the developer should be telling you right now is HUD's reviewed it, and the request for release of funds has been sent, but that isn't even on HUD's plate yet. So I would think you might want to wait and, wait and see what HUD has to say about the site. Really, I called and had some questions, and they just simply said, "It's not on our plate yet. We expect that it will be maybe October, maybe." So I would submit to you that you should wait for that to come around before you make any decisions. Also, there's an individual who is an opponent of this, who is not here tonight, I don't believe, I haven't seen him, who has retained a company to conduct a real estate appreciation analysis for surrounding neighborhoods, and that directly is going to focus on Evergreen properties as it relates to like neighborhoods. So that should be done in the next two weeks, is my understanding. Hopefully, it'll be done before the next meeting. I'm not sure when that's going to be scheduled. I just wanted to flag that for you. And also, Mr. Block said that it's going to be a site-based, there's going to be a site-based waiting list. I would, I haven't seen any proof of that or documentation. I would like to respectfully request that that be provided, that there is a formal agreement between the Aurora Housing Authority and Evergreen to allow to do that. That'd be great. All right, I have some remarks, then I'll just start talking, and I'm sure you'll cut me off, but we'll see how far I get. I think you should send this back down to the planning commission if you don't want to reject this straightaway. There's no doubt in my mind that nobody should be living in this location. The thirteen-year-old girl will have no privacy in a unit where there are holes cut out of the wall. Are we that desperate? Is there a premium for space around here so that buildings must be converted into living space no matter what the cost? I don't think so. The working mother who works midnights, good luck sleeping during the day in that place. Please make the applicant put up shades at least. So why are we going down this road? Batavia can settle for its own standards and its own community instead of letting a business capitalize on the needs of the poor. And I think I know the answer. I've been attending all the hearings. I didn't attend the main hearing--
One minute.
But I have since then, and the bottom line is, I believe, from what I've heard so far, that the city proponents are simply, they care more about repairing and reusing a building than it does about the needs of the poor. It wants to clean something up that the current owner should have been caring for instead of following its own code and focusing on those in need of housing. And I think we're being ballhogs here, so to speak. There's a wealth of tax credits that could be used to build almost twice as much housing from the ground up. Housing that should have windows, balconies, doors in the bedrooms, no holes in the wall to circumvent code, and for the love of God, walls made of something that doesn't heat up to one-hundred-and-twenty degrees or allows sunlight in whenever the sun is up. We should be taking this money to render cosmetic repair to a building--
Ten seconds.
--instead of focusing on how your future citizens should be living. The building doesn't look perfect, so we're going to use taxpayers' money to build abnormal and very poor living quality place to live.
It's time.
I don't think that's appropriate. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up is Rob Burns, and then on the second list is Jamie Tate.
With permission, I have a set of surveys, petitions, that have been signed. I'm sitting back here with Chris Browning, the owner of Pro Force, tenant of the building, Batavia resident, trainer of fire department personnel of Batavia, who's a little shy. I don't share that quality. So if it's okay, I'd like to pass out surveys that he has accumulated, or those friends of his, or whatever, and put them in your hands.
Get those to clerk, and we can make copy. Okay.
Everybody will get a copy.
Okay, so they're all the same. One for the record.
These petitions simply say they're against this development with the signature and address of the people signing. Any questions about that before I start my own five minutes?
Three fifty.
I hope you're joking, but I'll try to move fast. Well, if, I'm serious on this. If you want Chris to come up here and take up five minutes, we could do that. I thought we were saving you time. Could I, could I make clear I have five minutes if I need it? I'll try to be quick. Thank you. Lest I not get my major points out, which can happen when you have a three-minute time limit, as in the last plan commission meeting, the punchline of this presentation on detention is the following: Why does Batavia think that they're better than Kane County? Why does Batavia's staff and engineers think that they know better than someone else? Why do they think they don't have to follow the law? What I want to talk about in detention, I own, I'm the lead owner of, a group that owns a campus to the north of Campana. One of the things we are concerned about is detention. It's already been talked about tonight. I want to give you a little story about what happened to me in detention in this city. As a neighboring landowner, I was told by some consultants and others that a low-stress meeting with the city, when something like this is happening and you're the neighboring landowner, both on the north and the west, would be a natural thing to do. So I called out Mr. Strassman and asked for that, told him we had some concerns. He said, "Sounds like we can do that." I spoke to him on a Wednesday. We would meet Friday morning at 10:00 a.m. Except, he then said, "Why don't you write me an email about what you want to talk about?" I thought that was kind of strange, but I did it anyhow. I didn't hear from him Wednesday. I heard from him late Thursday. He had to cancel the meeting. Couldn't be done. My partner from the East Coast was going to be phoned into the meeting at 10:00 a.m. on Friday. Never happened. He then wrote me a couple letters trying to tell me why it was unnecessary to meet, because the things that we want to talk about, to use the phrase tonight, would be covered at the end of the time at the permit process, much further down the road. There was no need to talk about them right then. I waited about a month to see what happened. I've been following these developments. And finally, with an engineer, I went into Kane County and had a meeting with the stormwater engineers. And here's what I learned. What I learned was that Batavia is not following the Kane County stormwater ordinance. I learned that the engineer for the developer is not following the Kane County stormwater ordinance. I learned that the engineer for the developer knows damn well he's not following the Kane County stormwater ordinance. How do they know? Because he's not following it on another project that's currently in play. This was very disturbing. I also learned the way they do detention calculations. They're not the gross, they're on a gross basis, not a net basis, and here's a simple example. If the circle in the front lawn was twenty thousand feet, and now they want to make it to thirty thousand feet, thirty minus twenty would be ten thousand feet net. That's the way the developer is trying to interpret this with your city. That's the way your engineers are helping him interpret it in your planning department. Here's what Kane County says. "No, that's wrong. Thirty thousand is thirty thousand. You don't deduct anything. Thirty thousand minus zero is thirty thousand. Thirty thousand is higher than the twenty-five thousand, not twenty-three, three-sixty-eight, or whatever the hell he was talking about."
One minute.
"You're over. You need detention now." Our estimates with my partner say that if they do the detention in the back, you'll be closer to a hundred thousand feet of new surface than you-- be closer to 100,000 feet of new surface than you are 20,000 feet. We are very worried about detention. The other thing they told me was that, under the current plan, the circle drains currently, and apparently, if you believe a line that's on one of the developers' plans, it goes down to 31, it goes under 31 and into the river, presumably in a pipe. Under the current plan, that's not going to happen. They're taking what comes down there in four new drains, and they're going to shoot it back up at a diagonal toward the north wing and then drop it into the bank into my land. That is illegal.
Ten seconds.
So what Kane County told me is, "Go ahead, you can sue them." And I said, "Why should I sue them? Isn't Batavia supposed to protect me? And aren't you supposed to protect me?" So I think that's it, in a nutshell. There's other correspondence going on right now between Kane County and Batavia. Batavia is agreeing not to meet with Kane County. Thank you very much.
Next up is Jamie Tate, and then after that would be Sandra Pinsack.
Good evening, my name's Jamie Tate, I live in Geneva. My parents live in Batavia, so I have a little bit of a vested interest in this town as well. I'm going to make a comment tonight about process, I'm sitting here in the audience listening to everybody talk about stormwater and all the issues that you seem to have and the traffic and engineering and how it's done with entitlement. I think maybe we need to take a step back and consider doing something like stormwater, traffic, engineering, basic engineering with the site and development with entitlement because there's so many questions. It can change the site, I think so many councilmen brought that up tonight, that we're looking at plans that might not even be what they are. So maybe moving forward, that's not what you do now, but that's something that needs to be considered, that engineering is done with entitlement. I think that's pretty common in other communities that I've been to, that I've listened to as well. Also, comments with adjoining jurisdictions, KDOT, IDOT. IDOT has not given comments yet. I've talked to IDOT. I know other people in the audience has mentioned they've talked to KDOT. So I'm not sure how it's being presented this evening that everybody's in agreeance when the comments, I've looked at the website, I looked today, I didn't see any comments back from IDOT yet, and that KDOT letter seems to have a lot of comments. I would think that those would be, at least need to be addressed, or you put a contingent in your approval that compliance with the KDOT letter, appliance with any comments from IDOT, would be what the city of Batavia would like to see. I had some comments as well about the site plan that haven't been addressed. One in particular was like, the truck movements in the back, so I'm not sure, I feel like I had presented pictures of the site, of trucks in the back, and I'm not sure if that's been resolved yet. So I do want to throw that out there still as we're moving forward and you guys are reviewing this. And then lastly, questioning kind of on the comp plan and the mixed-use designation. There seems to be so much discussion about, should this be residential? Everybody's concerned about light, about natural air, about everything that has to go with residential use and residential living, quality of life. Yes, it's a mixed-use designation, but does that mean that mixed-use has to be residential? It could be mixed, commercial and industrial. It doesn't have to be necessarily residential. Going back to the comp plan, the comp plan was done in 2007. Who was involved in that comp plan? I brought this up at the last public hearing as well. How much public participation did we get? What was a true representation of the city of Batavia that wanted to see that as mixed-use designation as residential? Is that something that we need to be maybe considering? Maybe that's not what we should be doing. That was 10 years ago. Maybe it really doesn't work for this building now that we've had a project that has come this far and that we've had to study it this far. And we have to take a step back and look at, maybe it should not be residential, maybe it should not be mixed-use. Just because it's zoned that doesn't mean that's what you approve for that area. Lastly, I'm going to go back on the process. I feel like this process is moving too fast. Here we are, sitting with unresolved issues from KDOT, IDOT, unresolved issues from stormwater, and you're supposed to be looking at it to approve it tonight. I just feel like this process from, starting in May, and the concept plan kind of presentation is moving too fast. So maybe we need to take a step back and slow it down and get these all resolved before it keeps moving. Thank you.
Okay, up next is Sandra Pinsack, and then Jacob Savransky.
Good evening, Sandra Pinsack, 2005 Allen Drive, Geneva. Been a resident 39 years. I don't have any other comments because I know our people are giving you more than enough information to make an informative vote when you do come to that. But I do have something that does bother me, and that is the fact that all I've heard in every meeting I've attended is 80 units. What does 80 units shake out to? It's a number of people. HUD has a policy called the standard occupancy policy, and I believe Batavia does too. And that is, how many people can occupy a unit, an apartment, based on square footage with people? Adults, male, female, children, it does not matter. I don't, I myself, I don't believe have ever heard, what is the maximum number of people we're referring to here in this project? Is it 350? Is it 400? That is how many, I believe, can be housed in these 80 units. I'm certainly sure somebody here has that answer, or Evergreen should. Do you know? What is the maximum occupancy? Does anybody know? You do have a standard occupancy rule, so what is it?
Scott Bunnick.
Is it 350 people, 400?
We have not calculated that actual number. I mean, that's based on square footage and the type of unit.
Exactly, so you-
It's designated in the property maintenance code as to how many people can actually live in a unit. And the developer has their own maximum number of people that can live-
Okay, and Batavia does have theirs too. That is what the Planning Commission-
We have a maximum limit, but it's also based on bedrooms and square footage and things like that.
Exactly, and you do know the square footage?
I can't tell you what the square footage is on each individual unit, no. The developer can-
Okay, Evergreen should know, this is something they do for a living with HUD. Isn't that correct? The other thing is Fox Valley Family Initiative. They're super great people, and they really mean well, and we know that. One of the meetings we were at, one of the gentlemen had told us that Evergreen had promised them 20 credits. Again, we're talking about not people. Always, the developers seem to talk in terms of units, credits, vouchers, but not human beings. So I'm asking this council, what does the Fox Valley Family Initiative really believe that Evergreen is going to do for them? And how many people are they really going to house when they say 20 credits? Do they mean 20 people? Or do they mean 20 units? We were under the understanding it was 20 units at first. It isn't. It's people. 20 credits, 20 people. That's disabled people. And the other, my third point is, how many of these units are going to be handicap-equipped for disabled? I don't know that I've seen that anywhere in there. So I'd like to know, what is it in terms of people? 350, 400 maximum? Because you can talk 80 units all you want. We're talking people here. And that's a project. And they're going to live behind me, so I'd like to know how many people that is. And it's the same thing with the Fox Valley Family Initiative. Please clarify with Evergreen what these people are expecting they're going to receive in credits. Okay? And one other thing, okay, I'll be brief, and that is the Salan Bank. Again, when you're going to vote for something, I hope, I really hope, you vote on a final, a final schism of what they're going to build and not what may be down the road. I have faith in you, I have respect in you, I've lived here for 39 years, I've seen Batavia grow, as I've seen Geneva grow. You can't look at a snapshot. Please look at the full picture before you make a vote. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Jacob Savransky, and then John Hunter.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate everyone coming out here, and this is the first meeting I've had to attend. And obviously, there's a lot of information here to take in, but hopefully, I could speak to the sensibilities and sensitivities of everybody. My name is Jacob Savransky, and I am a Batavia resident, and I'm a lifelong Fox Valley resident. I grew up and spent the greater portion of my life in a single-family home, oldest of six children. I too have had a family member with a disability, suffered a disability due to a car accident and nearly lost their life. A lot of things, from a personal standpoint, resonate with me, given this development. You know, cost and affordability of housing was something that was always discussed as a child when I was growing up, and I experienced that very early on when I went through a foreclosure. I am very much a proponent for affordable housing. I am also a proponent for safety, and I'm a proponent of, you know, reasonable choices that we make when it comes to city government and our personal, personal lives and the community. One of the big things that I had a question as far as Evergreen Development, a lot of people talk about this being an asset to the community. I started to read up on this, and one of the studies that I actually saw, first and foremost, that had a recent date, was a 2015 study based out of Stanford, done by McQuade and Diamond. I would be able to forward this to you, and it was specifically looking at communities that were well-suited for subsidized housing. Unfortunately, I will read and quote one of the main findings of this study, if you haven't already read it. The net analysis revealed by the project for subsidized housing showed that in higher-income areas which exceeded the, you know, poverty threshold, that new buildings often led to a net loss within the community. And in this given case, their study focuses a $17 million loss based over a 10-year window, where the reverse in lower socioeconomic communities that are building subsidized housing, they saw that to be an asset to the community, which, once again, I don't feel Batavia and this project is well-suited for that. I have had the opportunity to take care of several people who unfortunately lost their lives due to vehicle accidents. It's something I've done my entire adult life, and I believe that that's something very real. And we talk about the stormwater, and we talk about all these other things, and one of the things that kind of struck me is that there was a discussion to reevaluate traffic when the time came by Evergreen Construction. You know, reevaluating the thing that is one of the highest causes of death when it comes to violent death or traumatic death in this country, it is traffic, it is cars. You know, people have very strong opinions on firearms, but yet more and more Americans and children lose their lives to traffic accidents. And that is something I saw my sister go through, where she's still to this day is affected by that. You know, horse and carriage as mentioned, a lot of good things were brought up here. But truly, this seems that we're trying to, you know, fit people into a situation, and we're trying to fit a community, you know, we're trying to make a community adopt something that doesn't seem to be well-suited on many, many reasons, whether it be financial, whether it be safety purposes, whether it be in architecture. And then another thing that I heard tonight that was, I thought was somewhat insensitive, was the discussion of, you know, people who, you know, they like the high ceilings, then they like all these other things. When the vast majority of these units are being looked at by probably single mothers, because that often seems to be how a lot of families are, my family included, they're looking at just the cost. They're looking at what can I get into? They're not looking at the heating costs, they're not looking at what water will cost, they're not looking at the traffic, the entrance and exits. They're looking at where can I have a place for my family? Where can my children sleep tonight? And that's something that still, I think, we're moving further and further away from, and let alone all the other concerns that we have as far as the logistics of drainage and so on and so forth, and high energy efficiency. There's far more questions about this development than there are answers. And for it to be going along this route, I just feel it's very premature. And at the very least, a gentleman mentioned market analysis with Evergreen's projects and how it benefits the community. That's something that I really think should be, have already been done. They should be showing how all their other projects have benefited communities like Batavia, not on, you know, apples-to-apples comparisons. But, you know, still, I will try to attend future meetings, but I am not for this development.
Okay, up next is John Hunter, and then Steve Tate.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for hearing my comments. My name is John Hunter, I live at 919 Red Wing in the Allendale subdivision, and I work out of the Campana Building, 901 North Batavia Avenue. The business I work for will be affected by this project. I want to start by saying that during the course of the Planning Council meetings and the Historic Preservation Committee meetings, collectively, those of us that oppose this project have submitted a plethora of information, calling into question many aspects of this project. Citizens have uncovered misleading statements, incorrect information, discrepancies, and other questionable items. It seems that much of the information has been falling on deaf ears as we present it during the course of the meetings, and in some cases largely disregarded and even buried or obfuscated. That's a real concern for us because we feel that you decision-makers are not getting all the information that we have uncovered, and in some cases, like with the case of only having three minutes to be able to present our information, we were truncated and not able to give you the full picture. So, you know, some of the topics that we're looking at is the parking and the traffic, the stormwater, the building issues, school impact, crime, and home values. And I feel that it's important for all of you to carefully consider all aspects of this project, however uncomfortable it might be. This project in particular seems to be more about profit than about preservation. We have seen that during the course of these meetings, there's been give and take and compromise when it comes to the historic aspects of this project, and we've seen things that are going to change this building, the primary view of this building permanently. And we're concerned about that. I mean, I feel that if we're looking at it from a preservation standpoint, then we should preserve as much of the primary view as we can. I agree that our communities need to incorporate affordable housing within our boundaries, but it should not be in this format. This is not a suitable place for people to be living, and it seems like the density and the layout of this building is just, makes it not suitable for human habitation. Saying that, I urge the council to please vote against this project and allow us to come up with a better solution as residents and as you, the council of this city, to come up with a better solution that would better serve the people that are the proposed residents of the Campana project, and make it so that it's better for everybody involved. This particular project at this location is just not a workable project, and it's certainly not going to be good for the residents of the building itself nor of the surrounding community. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Steve Tate. And then John Fermannas will be last.
Steve Tate, Allen Drive, Geneva. Pardon me. I have nothing prepared, but as I listen to this, you have a project that has lots and lots of ifs and very few constants. I'm in business myself. I don't do things on ifs. I make my decisions based on some facts. And you're looking to bend lots of rules to make something fit. You're looking at windows that are this high, that will offer ventilation that goes nowhere. People are going to be living in lofts 16 feet high, heat rises. Everybody's talking about the heating of the building. I think the cooling is going to be more important than the heating is. When you're looking at sunshine coming through glass block, it's a giant greenhouse. I'm truncating, there's nothing that I can offer that anybody else hasn't already said, but I would urge you to at least take your time, if not vote no on the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then John Fermannas, and then Guy Prisco will let you finish what you started.
Good evening, I'm John Fermannas, and I'm a tenant in 901-
I'm John Fermanis, and I'm a tenant in 901 North Batavia Avenue, the Campana Factory. And I've attended every meeting that's been held so far on this project. And listening here tonight, there were just a couple small items that came to my attention that should be brought to your attention. And this will be the third time I've brought up the handicap parking. The current handicap parking that's proposed on the historic front of the building impedes quite a bit on the grass and some of the oval that is considered historic. I found out the other day that the historic doors do not meet ADA compliance. They are doors in series, and ADA requires 48 inches of clearance when the doors are open. These have 27, so they don't, they don't meet the law. But there is an alternative. The door could be moved to the north wing. Parking could be in the northwest quadrant where there's flat space. There would be no need for handicap ramps at the historic entrance. We could have a heated ramp in the back. We could put brand-new doors, brand-new access, everything could be new and up to standard without having to modify the historic entrance up front. That's one thing. The other thing I want you to know is when the Batavia Historic Preservation Committee passed the COA, they passed 152 pages that was presented to them, and I don't think anybody read it. I read it. In that was included 14 conditions from the Illinois State Historic Preservation Office, that they accepted those 14 conditions. I want you to be aware that there are 14 conditions in that COA that have to be met. Another thing, they keep talking about the building being 60% occupied. They'd never mentioned the $60,000-plus dollars a year that AT&amp;T and T-Mobile pay to the owner, and they don't occupy anything but the side of the towers. One other thing, we talked about stormwater detention. Last week, I had a conversation with a contractor who was out there and asked me, "How'd the meeting go last night?" I said, "Well, the planning commission passed it." He said, "Great, I've been waiting months to get started on this $750,000 stormwater retention program." I said, "Great, what are you going to do?" He says, "I'm going to put a pond out there in the oval with an aerator, so I can wait to get started on this." That's hearsay, because it's coming from me. And we talk about the current business owners using parking. I have a 6,000 square feet, and we use up one parking space, maybe two. My neighbor is all dressed up. I'd never seen him with a customer. So, from a commercial standpoint, the only people that use the building are the mattress company, and they have their own parking spaces. But other than the west wing where they do the athletic stuff, we tenants in the building require very little parking. Thank you for your time.
And then Guy Prisco, if you wanted to come up and finish.
I was at the paragraph where I talked about the third-floor south apartments have no windows and depend on operable skylights for some natural light and ventilation. In a one-bedroom loft apartment, at least on the east side of the building, first floor, has a much larger living and bedroom area than a two-bedroom loft apartment. The two-bedroom apartments' living, dining, and kitchen area are very small for two- or three-person families. Energy conservation requirements of the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code, adopted by the City of Batavia, cannot be met by the proposed construction. For example, the four-inch glass block has an R-value of 1.96, which is like almost nothing. One-inch insulating glass has an R-value of 3.06. The code requirement, this is probably for a new construction, the R-value is 20. I don't know what it is for a historic building, even if it's a little less, it's a great difference. Considering that the exterior wall in a typical apartment is 70% glass block and approximately 30% below-sill windows and a small area of brick, it is apparent that the proposed construction is deficient in insulation by a factor of almost five. In other words, the proposed construction provides only, on the outer wall, 1/5 the insulating value required by energy codes. To loss such a deficiency would result in excessively high costs in HVAC equipment and unaffordable operating costs. I live in an apartment that has a heat pump, and the heat pump is, can be a very noisy thing, especially if it's in the same space. And in our apartment, the heat pump is not right in our living space, it's just off, near a bathroom and near the entry area. But when the thing is running, it's noisy. And in a situation like this, where you have the high probability of high stratification in a ceiling net height, where the temperatures are going to stratify, the only way to compensate for that is to have a fan running continuously. So that presents, I think, an untenable kind of a problem to live with. In regard to parking, as proposed, it's already been documented here and pointed out that it's inadequate for the number and type of apartments and commercial tenants, and if the land bank area is used for parking, the recreation area will be lost. And we heard some ands if or buts about what they could do, but I can't imagine anybody playing soccer in the front of that building alongside Fabian Parkway and Route 31 and seeing the soccer balls going across the street. So, in summary, the proposed relocation, or not in summary, but this is in regard to the historic preservation situation. The proposed relocation of the cell phone antenna on top of the tower is yet another abuse of the building's most iconic feature, the Campana Tower. In retrospect, many believe, and this is from a lot of people's opinion, that allowing the antenna placement in the first place-
One minute.
-was a mistake and is seen as an attempt to help the building owner realize additional income. Many wonder how allowing the antenna could have been allowed under historic preservation rules. The planning commission appears to have missed the opportunity to correct the original mistake by not allowing the antenna to be placed anywhere in the tower. There's plenty of areas north of the antenna building where a tower could have been built. Increased traffic is a very danger, and a very dangerous intersection is a very serious concern of Homestead residents. All of the above is by way of saying that the residents of the Homestead have always been supportive Batavians in matters that serve the public welfare of all of our citizens. As the mayor has said, it was the support of the Homestead residents that carried the vote for the Batavia Library, now the pride of all Batavians. Homestead residents stand ready to support viable projects, even subsidized housing projects, that truly serve the public welfare. The proposed Evergreen project does not serve the public welfare and should be rejected. And I'm going to hand these out, or I'll give them to you. I have one for each alderman. And I want to point out one thing. There was an article in Wall Street Journal this morning, I don't know if any of you've seen it. I copied it and I attached it, and it's a really telling piece of journalism, and I think you all should read it. It was done by the Cato Institute, but of course, it's a libertarian think-tank in Washington. And there's one little highlight in it, as they always have in an article. I'll just read it to you, and you can read the rest. It says here, "Developers and investors, not the poor, benefit from the credit. It should not survive tax reform." And they're talking about the low-income housing tax credit. It's a revelation to read this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan, did you have a question, speaker?
Yeah, just a quick question for, is the, is what you're turning in, sir? You can take the podium. Is what you're turning in signatures based on the, all of Homestead? Like you've collected a lot?
No, no, I said, I said in the beginning, we're in the process of collecting petitions. The Homestead is a large organization, there's 300-
You're my ward, that's why I'm asking.
Excuse me?
You're my ward, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, okay. You know, well, it's very difficult to get things done in a hurry at Homestead, because there's so many people, so much, so much going on. For instance, we had a meeting this morning, and there were other things going on. There was a, and China arranged meetings, so you don't have conflicts, it's impossible over there. They had a double-decker ride in Chicago, and so there were about 50 or 60 people went to that. And then there's other things going on. So, it's a, it's kind of a process over there. We have, in each building, we have floor meetings at least once a month, and that's where a lot of these things get discussed. I'm a floor leader in our building. And so that's how-
We can, we can take this offline, but I will say this much, I appreciate the amount of thought that went into this. I would like to speak to offline, though. I'm curious if, because the organization has given some public remarks regarding their concerns, I would be interested to hear if, as neighbors, if this project were to move forward-
Yeah.
-if there's an opportunity, if some of your concerns were addressed, if you would welcome this as a residential project. So, we'll speak offline, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone from the council have any additional comments after the public comment? Mark?
I have a laundry list, so I don't know how long we want to go tonight, because I still have a bunch of things.
I agree with you. I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I have questions about fire protection and stuff that'll come back from Laura. I'm not ready to make a vote on the planned overlay yet, so I would propose that we add this to the next COW meeting as a topic to have further discussion by the council.
Second.
Motion by me. Second by Callahan. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, so we'll carry this to the next COW meeting.
These two ordinances, then?
Yes, both ordinances, because they go together.
September 26th meeting.
Laura, is there time for this on the September 26th meeting?
Yes, there is.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Dan?
One thing that kept hitting me in the face, seems like the residents have had a lot of time to do some research regarding process. I am concerned, and I'd like staff to come back to address some of the many issues they brought up. It feels to me that we are so preliminary in this process that a lot of the issues that they have brought up are not relevant at this time, but there are some issues, it seems, that were extremely relevant. I would be interested in a response from staff on which ones were relevant and which ones, we know that we have plenty of meetings to talk about those other issues.
Scott Savadi.
I just want to say thank you to those that are for this and those that are not for this. I've been consistently impressed through this whole process, and that's why this process is in place, by the way. To, there's been some very well-researched arguments for and arguments against, and we appreciate it. It really helps, it really does.
I echo that. I mean, I, over the past few weekends, several hundred pages of documents provided by the public, I don't have, I mean, most of us have full-time jobs. I don't have the kind of time to do that kind of research, to pull that kind of information that everybody did. So it makes it, kind of makes my job a little easier to find that, and it, like Scott said, some very, very good information.
And I'd like to thank the public that came tonight for the civility. This is one of the few meetings that I've been to with this kind of attendance that we haven't had to use the gavel, we haven't had to say anything to anybody, and everybody behaved themselves tonight. So I'm really proud and happy of everybody that's out there, that we made it through this meeting.
Marty?
Yeah, I think the question was, are we reading the information? Absolutely, we're reading the information. There's tons of information that is out there, and we understand it. I know there are concerns from people that maybe we're not getting all the information. All the information that has been submitted becomes part of the record, and we get it. It is being put out there, we're getting it put on the website, it is coming to us, even if it's last minute, we do get it, and that's why there's new stuff tonight that we still need to review.
And everything that got turned in tonight goes into the record that becomes part of the minutes from this meeting, so it is available to anybody else that wasn't here.
And I have to say, you know, unfortunately, my job affords me that I sit at my computer all day. So I see a constant barrage of social media. So when people say about the old people on the council who don't use their computers, that would not be me. But it is hard to separate, though, where people say, "Tear down the building and build a park." Well, that doesn't work. Or, "Do this with the building." This is private property, and so as a council, we don't always get to pick and choose what happens on private property. In this case, you know, if there hadn't been any variances, we wouldn't probably not have much involvement in this. So, you know, we do not have ultimate power over things, and we have to follow our codes and pay close attention to our variances, but, you know, we can't just say, "Well, the best use for that property happens to be, you know, a Starbucks," or whatever, you know? So we have to follow our own codes and the limitations by the law, and of course, we, you know, have legal counsel here to make sure that we don't vary too far away from that. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we do pay very close attention, and some of the things, while they sound like great ideas, it's just not within our authority. Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, this is not a final vote. This is to approve it to the city council scheduled for October 2nd, so the tabling isn't delaying the process, it gives us more time to discuss it. But maybe for the public, and from my knowledge, we can review what the process is after that. Let's say it does get approved, what else needs to be done? You know, what's the next step?
And Scott can speak to that, I'm sure Joel can speak to that.
Yeah, we can, we can provide a summary of that if you want, but I mean, just briefly, you know, the planning commission has approved the design review, the Historic Preservation Commission has approved the certificate of appropriateness. After the city council, if the city council approves of the ordinances, we would then record those ordinances, and then the applicant could then apply for building permits, depending on, you know, what it is that they're going to be doing with the site plan and everything else. We would have engineering review as part of it, because they're going to be building the parking lot. They would have to provide information relating to drainage and detention and all that, if that's actually going to be required or not. And then, you know, we would review the building itself for, you know, building code compliance. Things that have been brought up in social media are things that, you know, the building has radon, it has lead, it paint, it has asbestos. All of those things would have to be addressed as part of the building permit review. They, you know, they renovate buildings all over the place in Chicago, there are warehouses and things like that. This is not unusual, this is a typical thing that would have to be done as part of any renovation of a building. So those things would be addressed as part of the actual review process.
Thank you. Marty?
I just wanted to address, just one little issue that people keep mentioning, is how did it get this far? It got this far because they have a legal right to present to us and petition the government and be heard, and it is simple as that. And all of this whole process is going through meetings after meetings after meetings after meetings, and just as the people that are against this have a fair hearing, they do. They have the obligation, or they have the privilege and right to be listened to by us on all of it, so that if we have questions that are brought up by the public, that they are allowed the opportunity to address them and see if they can answer the questions to our satisfaction.
And based on the first time that Evergreen came before us, it's been five months, and I don't think we're any closer than we were five months ago, other than it's now gone through two additional committees, so-
This is not moving fast by any-
It's not, yeah. Government work moves very slowly and messily. So, we have motioned in the second, and we voted on it, and so it's back to you.
All right. Then we will move on to number nine, which is project status. Laura, do you have anything tonight?
I just have a couple of things. We received late notice today regarding ongoing Illinois Department of Transportation work that's being done on State Route 25, that they are planning to prime the Batavia section on September 20th tomorrow, and then paving binder starting on September 21st. And also wanted to provide you with an- And also wanted to provide you with an update. Last week, we discussed the One Washington Place project, and since then, I've been in conversation with the developer. And internally, they had several meetings about the project. And Dave Patzel today contacted me and asked if we could meet on Monday or Tuesday along with the city attorney, because we were talking about those amendments to the RDA. So it will be interesting, and I'll look forward to bringing back to you the results of those meetings.
That's Monday and Tuesday?
Monday or Tuesday.
Monday or Tuesday. Today is Tuesday, so it's a week from now. So there's really no sense of urgency to get on with any of this? No commitment on their part?
An extreme sense of urgency. We have information-
It's not that urgent. Sorry, go ahead.
We could meet tomorrow without all the information that we need to discuss, but they're still gathering some information on their side from experts that they've contacted, and we are still waiting for responses from environmental experts that we have contacted on our side. So we expect that we'll have all the information that we need for the meeting the earliest is Monday, so that's why we chose those days.
There's just a frustration factor because we've been waiting. And again, I still don't see a commitment on their part. I mean, we're still talking about things, but there's nothing, they've not committed to anything. I mean, the city has committed. We've committed well over $1 million to the project, and they have not. They have not even become close to matching us. Okay? So maybe if they had a set of plans that people can bid on, we can get moving with things.
Well, I think that the, the way that they discovered that the costs were higher on the project was because they did receive some bids on their plans. So that's what has brought them to this point, and at this point, they're trying to investigate ways to address those additional costs.
Scott, you had something?
Yeah, we had complaints last week, I believe, about dust from the Seaman site. Apparently, Mother Nature has taken care of that problem by raining on the site and now created mud instead. So we are aware of the mud, and we have addressed it with them to make it clean up. So they can't win either way, it seems like.
Thanks for taking care of it.
Yep, sure. Just went a little overboard, I suppose.
Laura, you know, you mentioned Fractal and Storehenge as being, like, pushed way out? Well, but, I mean, it was supposed to be, they were both supposed to be done a couple weeks ago. And I knew that we had the plate problem on Fractal on the bridge, and we needed a new mounting plate made for it.
Right. And it was taken to one place because the artist was convinced that that place was going to be able to fabricate that, and they are not. So the whole thing needs to be moved someplace else to downtown Chicago to have it done, which is both more costly and time-consuming in order to do that. So that explains the fractal one.
And then we're still doing the engraving on the plates for Storehenge. Got it. Just, everybody asks about those green posts, and so I-
I know.
Just keep saying it'll be done in two weeks.
It'll be done in two weeks. Okay.
If anyone needs a feel-good tonight, while this meeting was going on, there's a nice little human interest story out here in the lobby of two competent air employees that rescued a dog, brought it down here, contacted the police, and put the owner back in touch with them, and it's up on the Facebook page. So you can go home and feel good about the video.
And we, yeah, we will apologize for this meeting not being broadcast live on BATV tonight. There were technical issues. It was not done on purpose. And we don't have a legal obligation to broadcast these meetings. We do it as a courtesy to our residents.
Well, and it's our outreach. I mean, I think it's something that we agreed that we want to do.
Yes.
And not sure what the reason was, but it was not broadcast live tonight.
Okay.
It was recorded, though, right?
Yes.
It was recorded. It will be rebroadcast, but it was not live tonight. Didn't want to say anything during the meeting because nobody can tell that anyway.
So all those out there who aren't listening to us.
It was put up on the Facebook page. It was put up on everything else. Every other media outlet that BATV uses-
It's still available.
-got it out tonight, that it will be available.
It was not a grand right-wing conspiracy.
Hey, Laura, just, we discussed before you came on board, Bill was going to find just something on a development for the, an IDNR report for the dam and talking about some, we were also discussing the river bank, you know?
Stabilization?
Stabilization, thank you. I meant to drive over and check it out on the west side, south of the dam, south of the Wilson Street Bridge. I didn't have time. But I just wanted to make sure we start getting that on some agendas in the future. We can start tying into that. Because too much time has really elapsed. We met with the City of Geneva on that they came here, we talked about it. We met with Park District. So I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of any of that, okay?
Sounds good.
And we didn't meet with the City of Geneva.
Sure.
I misspoke. But it was the Park District who came in and met with us, and it's pretty important stuff, and so.
Absolutely. I'll put it on a coming-up agenda.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Any others? Do you have a question out in the audience? Hand slash up before.
No, we're starting to get up, I just hope that it's positive, and it's time to hear.
All right. Nothing else?
I move we adjourn.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Leave. Thank you.